This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise Vs and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It's November 22. And we have three meetings tonight. The first is the council is convened at five o'clock to begin review of the town manager's evaluation documents. If all counselors are ready, we will begin discussing the town manager's evaluation and the draft memo on or around 6:30. The public is welcome to stay connected, but you may find it more interesting to check back around 6:15. We have a public forum at seven, a regular council meeting at 7:15. There's no public comment during this first meeting. There will be public comment during the public forum. We will remain on the same Zoom link. And so pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I am calling the November 22, 2021 meeting of the Amherst Town Council to order at 5:04. I'll call upon each counselor by name. Please let me know that you can hear us and we can hear you and then re mute your mic. Shalini Baummild has not joined us yet. Alyssa Brewer?
Present.
Pat De Angelis?
Present.
Darcy Dumont? Not joined us. Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johannicky?
Present.
Dorothy Pam?
Present.
Evan Ross?
Present.
George Ryan?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
Here.
Steve Schreiber has informed me he won't be here till about 6:30. Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Sarah Schwartz?
Present.
Thank you. Meeting is available by audio, video, and live on Amherst Media. There's no chat room. If you have technical difficulties, please let Athena or me know. And I am hearing that you have all received the email. Yes, yes.
We've all received the email?
You also should have received a packet, Dorothy.
I received a packet, yes.
The packet is identical to what's in the email.
Okay, good.
And you may open the packet.
Yes.
And Lynn, can we just turn our pictures off while we're reading?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It may be my surface is acting a little slow, but I'm not yet seeing that the materials have been uploaded to our packet so that the public can be reading along.
I'm uploading them right now. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I know there's this really tiny window during which we're doing this. Thank you so much.
Lynn, this is Shalini. I just wanted to say I'm here now.
Thank you, Shalini. I have that recorded. It's now 6:30 and it would be in the best interest of everyone if we could begin our discussion during this time period. If you please show your hand or more importantly, show your face to let us know you're present. Alyssa, did you want more time to read? I can't hear you.
I'm not finished, but I'm what? I'm ready to move on.
Okay. And all right, please show your picture so that I know you are back in your chair or wherever you're seated. Athena, whenever you're ready, please let me know.
I'm here.
Okay, let's take the screen down. Our agenda tonight for this meeting includes the fact that we have a presentation and discussion. Therefore, we can go ahead and begin our discussion and I will recognize people as they raise their hand. I also want to point out that this is not the night that we will adopt the memo. There will be a based on your comments. And there will be another revision of the memo that will come to the council at a subsequent meeting. So, comments? Alyssa?
Sure, everyone knows they can count on me to break the ice. So, one, I appreciate all the effort that went into this by everyone, although I'm going to say right now I'm finding extremely disturbing that some of our colleagues did not fill out any ratings, didn't fill out any comments whatsoever. And I don't know why we as a shared town council believe we're doing an evaluation together, but we always do uneven amounts of work. And I accept that, but to have no comments or no ratings makes sense to me. Separately, I know that you explained Lynn in your evaluation that you decided to give only ratings and not comments. And I understand the words that you wrote and we can have perhaps in the future a conversation about that process, right? And how you've done that over the last couple of years and how that's differed from past practices and what everybody thinks of that, because we could all have very different opinions and obviously the majority is what the majority should say associated with that. The other part about process that I think is so important, and I know that I wrote a lot of comments about it in my evaluation, that I really hope we'll have that conversation like after we get through the actual content of his evaluation, but more about process for next time, like when we're talking about the goals for next time. Because by not having an agreed upon evaluation form, maybe that's why an individual counselor thought they could simply disregard doing any markings of any kind on their evaluation and only complaining at the end. Perhaps if we'd had that conversation right after we adopted the goals, we could have all understood. And it would have also addressed the counselor, or there may have been more than one, who said, "I can't choose between these categories because you've lumped all these things together," which again was a decision not made by the full town council in terms of the instrument. It was just, it was just the whole goal. So like if you thought somebody did really great and you thought they did really poorly and you thought they did in the middle, how were you supposed to pick a rating? Which is why, of course, traditionally, we called everything out individually. So again, I think that's part of that conversation about the goals, because we have to figure out when we set the goals, how we're going to use the instrument. And we have not done that any of the years we've been doing this as a town council. And that's why we end up with the bizarro results of people in between ratings and potentially also why we've got some people who aren't doing ratings at all. So thanks for listening to that, but I think that's, we get tired of the subject, but it's important that we talk about the process after we adopt the next set of goals.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I'm frustrated because I'm finding reading these comments to be one of the most interesting things that I've done as a town counselor. And I'm seeing lots of interesting comments made by a wide variety of counselors. And I am, I'm not known as a slow reader, but I'm reading thoughtfully. I didn't slack off at all, but I'm now on goal six. So I've really enjoyed reading these things and thinking about people's ideas and comparing them with, you know, what I've heard before, whatever. So I'm a little frustrated because I'm enjoying all of your comments, folks. I think they're really good and I love the the different perspectives that people are bringing and I can't always predict where people are going, which I enjoy, you know, so we're going to just skip over that, I guess, and we'll go forward. So that's, that's my frustration.
Again, Dorothy, this is not the last time we will discuss this. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Andy?
Well, since everybody, since first two comments were about process, I thought that the process was good in that I understand that we lumped together into categories, but it made it possible in filling out the form to do it with, I think it was an easier job to actually complete the form when there was not multiple categories under each one requiring separate comment, because frequently it lumped together. And I think that it created a fatigue factor in writing in doing the evaluation that didn't gain from my mind and in what was the ultimate result. I was very impressed by most of the comments received and how they came about. I think that the other thing that I would note is that I heard a lot of complaints from some of you who were new to the process stream in the first year that it was hard to do rankings when you were new to the process and it was only one year in. Now you're in your third year. And but we're also starting a cycle where we're going to have a new council every other year. So we need to be careful to develop a process that's going to work for the fact that councils are going to be changing much more, more frequently than we experienced in our first term.
Kathy?
I, I liked how this was set up for me. And I'm looking at what the way other people wrote, we got what Dorothy said, we got much more thoughtful and varied essays from people in response to these large categories. So people could focus in on a few things or several. It was pretty hard to give a rating and I thought it was clever how people put two Xs in a box to do, and you split the score. You know, but it was really what people were saying is part of it was done well and part of it was not done well. And so that the rating just really doesn't capture that. So I just want to make one comment because I did, I haven't thoroughly read your cover memo that is bringing this together. I thought there was more meat in the comments than you've captured. And I just want to, I know Paul will read these and he will see the whole thing, but you know, for example, on community engagement, several people talked about the strategic agreement or whatever we call it, partnership with UMass, but stressed there was a social part of it, you know, and dealing with them in COVID, but there's a financial part of it. And I really wanted that to be over in finance as well as in social, because it's money. And I'm looking for every source of money we can get. So just trying to bring those out a little bit more Lynn, and I'll send you comments on it. Similarly, on the four capital projects, there was, when I say several, and I remember Alyssa, last time you said, how many is several? Is several two? Is it three? But as I read through them, it was at least more than one said, are we thinking too rigidly about fire and DPW? Can we think, can we think differently about them? And, and that is, I've not been privy to any of the thinking about them other than the very first time they were presented. So I would just bring those tidbits out a bit more in the cover memo, because I thought they were, especially when they were said with different words by more than one person. You know, and so the parking one you did bring out, but parking was a bigger set of issues of not only did we not do one thing, but we haven't done the fees and we haven't done some other pieces. So just, it may be just one, one or two more sentences, but as I said, I didn't look through your summary and I can only imagine how many hours this took you. So, so you know, in sending you comments, I mainly want to pull out some of the, what I thought were very insightful comments by different counselors. And, you know, even on the relationship with the town council, I never thought about it, but I agree with overly long presentations of materials that we only got a few minutes before was not a good use of our time and was not a good use of staff time. So getting it sooner and, and getting right to the thing and having those questions that we raised be answered before they get to. So there were some very good insightful things that were improvements of the process that would save all of us time. That I'd like to capture some of those in your cover. That's it.
Thank you, Kathy. And I, I just have to say, except the process comments, but I frankly, more interested in this point, at this point in comments similar to those that Kathy has made. Mandy Jo?
Yes, thank you. Do you want us to just say all of our comments or are we going to take the comments policy, you know, area by area? Because I, it'll take me a while to get through all of them. And so I think that's why people are unsure what to start with.
Okay, why don't we go back and do them one at a time? We will start with the policy goals and we will start with climate action. Mandy Jo, do you have a comment there?
No.
Okay. Shalini, do you have a comment there on climate action?
No.
Evan, do you have a comment on climate action?
Yes, and I was banking on Shalini taking a minute so that I could find what I was going to, oh, I just wanted to clarify in the evaluation summary, the line, excuse me, he has begun to document requests and purchases that will reduce the town's carbon footprint and specifically added a line item into the budget that supports these requests. Is that line, that line item is referring to the sustainability, the $100,000 capital line item? Can we just throw the word capital in there to clarify that that was a capital line item and not an operating budget line item? Thank you.
Other comments on climate action? Okay, then we're going to move on to community health and safety. This was not an easy one to write. Andy Jo?
Yeah, um, and you'll hear this a couple of times over the course of this in my comments. And I, I've barely got through this before you were calling us to, to meet. So I think a number of us would love to spend more time doing this. And so these are just going to be very, you know, surface comments at this point, but given what I read in the counselor comments on this section, I thought the section on EMS staffing, police department levels or particularly EMS staffing were was not given enough due compared to how many people had commented on it. It was kind of thrown in there. I read it as sort of being thrown in there instead of being actually talked about and given some weight, given how many counselors commented on it. So I think we should highlight that part more than what was done in this memo.
Okay. Are there any other comments on this one? Mandy Jo? No. Alyssa?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, community health and safety.
Yes, I'm sorry. In the second paragraph on your page five, where you, where you summarized, it talks about, the last sentence begins, "This period of increased job loss." And I wonder if maybe you were originally talking about two different things, but it, as a standalone sentence, it's not really making any sense to me.
Okay.
So I wonder if that was just a cut and paste editing thing?
I think when you say, put the words increase in loss in the same sentence, it immediately becomes confusing. So let me try to work on that one. Okay?
I don't know if, I mean, if what you're referring to is the fact that community members have lost jobs, that's town staff have lost jobs, because I'm just not sure where we're going with that particular comment.
Okay. Dorothy? Please, Andy?
All right. I think I need to redirect on what we're doing. So I'm looking at the paper. But she said page five, that wasn't what was on my page five. Am I probably reading the wrong report? What I have here?
Lynn's report.
With the individual, the individual comments by counselors. That is not what we're looking at. Is that right?
We are, we are looking at the draft memo, which is dated November 22, 2021. And it's addressed to Paul Bachmann.
Would that have come in a separate envelope?
No, it should have come in your main envelope.
Okay, so something came in a separate envelope with, is this, is this the evaluation summary? Okay. You wrote it. You wrote this one, right?
It is a memo from me to Paul Bachmann.
Okay, so I did read that. I didn't know that's what we were looking at now. I was still looking at the document with counselors. So the point is, we're supposed to comment on your work. Is that right? Did you capture?
Whether I've captured something, whether it needs more emphasis, whether it needs to be clarified, we're not going to wordsmith tonight. It's a matter of pointing out issues.
Okay. All right.
Right now, okay, right now, we're on community health and safety.
Right. Okay. So at least I had, I did finish this, didn't finish the other. I did.
Thank you. Kathy?
I just wanted to second Mandy's point about firing EMS, because I looked at your wording. It's, it's not just that it's the COVID created an additional toll, but we have the sense that it's been neglected and it's part of our health and safety. So I thought you captured pretty well on what several people said is a concern that we jumped in and made a commitment that we, money commitment, that we may not be able to sustain. But I, I think you can't underestimate that. It's, I made, as people read my comments, you know, and I don't know how to word it in this, but Paul, for all listeners, so it's that I think it's good when the town manager says, "Do you realize you're on a collision course?" Or do you know that you can't do all of these things out of the same bucket? You know, we're going to have to make hard choices. So it's not a comment just on this section, but it's a reminder to all of us that it's nice to say yes, but we may not, saying yes sometimes will have consequences. So I just wanted to write that a little bit stronger. You've done a pretty good job, all of which raised the issue of finances sustainability, but we really have it throughout this, Lynn, on wherever you picked that up.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Shalini, this is on the second goal, community health and safety.
Yeah, I this is a challenging goal. And I'm just speaking to the part about developing CREST and, you know, the difficult conversations that went to it. And it's not just the town manager. It was just a hard conversation for all of us. It's a new conversation we're having publicly for the first time. So it's just challenging. And I think having someone with more experience and which has already been decided, there will be a diversity and inclusion, equity, inclusion officer who's going to support and facilitate these conversations, but we need someone with that expertise to create safe spaces to have these difficult conversations. And yeah, and allow for different people, different stakeholders to be, to create inclusive spaces, literally for everyone to be able to speak and brainstorm and ask questions. And I, I had a comment, but I don't know where it will go. It is a general comment. Okay, I think I know, I think I know where it'll go. Okay, so I'll wait for that one.
So there, let me just say, there, now that this is a public document, as individuals, not with the whole group, you can provide feedback. Okay, Dorothy, you have your hand up.
So I believe I now know what we're doing. We look at what you say, we compare it to the remarks that we read, and then we say, did you capture them? So I find this, you know, something that I really, I don't really know, like to do this, it's top of my head, but in your summary, do you reflect the fact that several people asked for a staffing study? And do you reflect the fact that people say the long-term financial viability isn't clear? Because those are the two points in the individual comments that I starred as saying, yes, that's really an important point. So where, where do you have them? Because I've kind of skimmed yours, but I didn't really see it as a strong point.
The staffing study that I mentioned is actually in the management goals. And the long-term viability, financial viability, I probably mentioned here and then at least one other, one or two other places.
Okay, so I guess.
Raise the issue, Dorothy, which is what I want, so that now we go back and make sure it's threaded throughout the document.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Right. Shalini, you had your hand up again and then you took it down. Okay, any more comments on this goal? And I just want to make a note that we are going to stop at seven, because that's when we're going to have a public forum. And our agenda for this evening does have this item on it, so we can continue it once we move to the general meeting. Okay? Economic viability. Mandy Jo?
Yeah, again, on page, I think it's labeled eight, the, just the one paragraph that says moving forward. Several counselors stress the need to hire an economic development director and then other, Eric, several councils mentioned was a need to renew efforts to implement recommendations downtown parking working group. I didn't think that, you know, that that paragraph again left the, the impression, the correct impression as to what the evaluations actually said on those matters. Several counselors, I think, actually mentioned that no progress was made on the downtown parking working group at all. Recommendations despite our goal saying we needed a plan to implement them and there was just nothing. So I think it just needs fleshed out a little bit more or made a little more noticeable or, or import of some sort, because I just didn't think it did what the counselor said justice.
Okay, yeah. Are there other comments on economic viability? Alyssa?
I'm sorry, I don't have time to refer back to the town manager self-evaluation, but on page seven, in the second paragraph, it refers to advancing on the town manager's destination Amherst vision. It's not the town manager's.
I'm sorry. Yes, correct. Okay, got it. Are there other comments on economic viability? Remember, this is just our first pass. This is not a final pass. Okay, four major capital projects. Mandy Jo?
The third paragraph that talked about DPW and FIRE, again, I didn't think was strong enough. The ongoing search stymied progress, but counselors expressed more than just it's stymied progress. There were a lot of expression about frustration, ways to look at it differently, all sorts of things. And that just wasn't even addressed at all in this, this paragraph.
Okay. All right. Are there other comments on the four major capital projects? I should say, are there other initial comments? Dorothy?
Does your comment reflect some of Counselor Shown's request that the decoupling of that, that more thought be given to alternative ways to cite parking, firehouse and DPW?
That was really, I think, the point that Mandy Jo was making and I have already made note of that.
Okay.
Kathy? Dorothy, was that, no, I'm sorry. Dorothy, was that it?
That was. Okay. Yes, yes.
Dorothy, you're muted. Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, that was the point I made really quickly and Mandy made better. But it wasn't just the progress, but decoupling them, talking about them differently. We thought we needed a new approach. And I think no one else And I think no one else said this, but I, in the financial, we do have a, a plan on this, but it's not, it's, it's a hard choice kind of plan. So I would just like to put something in it, you know, it's not that we're out of the woods. This, as Chair of the school, this is going to be looming big over the next couple of years, and people saw what the library took, so just, just an awareness that the, the school has one line on most encouraging. We're now working, but, but, you know, looking ahead, this is going to take a lot of work. So I, I think some people stress this, Lynn, but that this was, many of us ran on the school being a top priority, so. So it may just be one more sentence.
Got it. Okay. Anything else on the four cap, major capital investments? Okay, then it's six fifty-seven. Rather than go on to housing affordability, we will start with that when we get back into our next meeting. So I am going to call this meeting adjourned. You stay on the same website, just like we've done in the past. And we then come back, the next thing is in fact a public forum. It's on the financial orders, and we will be doing that immediately at seven o'clock, okay? When you come back, please make sure your picture is on.
Does that mean we have, by my count, clock about four minutes?
If that. Please mute yourself if you haven't. It's seven o'clock, so as you, as you return, please put your video on so I can see that you're here. Thank you. As you return, please put your video on so that we can begin the meeting. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and begin this meeting. Athena, are we still recording?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Can you take the slide down? Thank you. It's November twenty-second. This is the second of three meetings. It's a public forum on appropriations outside the budget. And our focus is on hearing from you. The regular town council meeting will follow as soon as this forum closes. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. We have a forum of the council present, and I have already checked that they can hear us and we can hear them. And so I'm going to call meeting to order at seven oh two. There is no chat room. If you have any technical difficulties, please let Athena and me know. Sean, and Gano are, Finance Director is going to give a two to three minute slide presentation of one slide that focuses us on the financial orders.
I'm sorry, before we begin, Darcy's joined us, can you please?
I will note that Darcy has, yes, Darcy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
Thank you. Any other counselors joined us? I'm looking for Steve Schreiber, but thank you, okay.
Okay, if I go ahead, Lynn?
Please.
Thank you. So tonight is the public forum for several financial orders that were presented to the council last week. There were three financial orders last, presented last week, however, the finance committee split one off into a separate order that I'll highlight on this slide. So the first order is to transfer two million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand seventy-nine dollars from free cash into two stabilization funds. Two million six hundred eighteen thousand seventy-nine dollars into the general stabilization fund and two hundred and ten thousand into the reparation stabilization fund. The town has a practice each year of transferring free cash in excess of five percent into these generals, into the general stabilization fund. This year, because we had a larger than usual surplus at the end of the year, the transfer that we're proposing is not quite everything above five percent. We're proposing some appropriations and some additional transfers. So, so this two point six going to general stabilization fund isn't everything above five percent. It's roughly half of that amount. And as I said, two hundred and ten thousand to the reparation stabilization fund, this is consistent with our discussions over the summer. When we created the reparation stabilization fund, that the amount to be transferred in would be in line with our cannabis tax revenues that we received during the year.
I'd like to pause for a moment, Sean. I forgot to have Andy Steinberg call the finance committee meeting to order.
Yes, I will call finance committee meeting to order in this, under the same rules as the that applied to convening this meeting of the council. In addition to the members who are members of the council who've already confirmed that they can hear and be heard, I just quickly asked Bob Hegner and then Matt Holloway and Bernie Kubiak in that order, just to say they're here so that we know, and then you can go on.
This is Bob, I'm here. Is Matt present?
Present, Bernie? I'm present.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead. You've gotten through the first one.
Okay. The second order is to transfer four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from precash into the other post-employment's benefits trust fund. This is the amount that equals what we have reduced from the, the normal line item that's in our operating budget each year. Both for FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, we reduced it, and so this four fifty would restore it to what it would have been. And to remind people, OPEB is the fund that we have set aside that grows over time and is meant to make sure that we have sufficient funds well into the future to honor all of our primarily health insurance obligations to employees. The third order, and this is the one that was split, but the original order was to appropriate one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand for capital improvements to roads, sidewalks, and a supplemental dog appropriation. The supplemental dog appropriation was split into the next order. So the revised amount for this one is one million two hundred and fifty thousand, which would be just for roads and sidewalks. And those were identified because one of the reasons why we had such a surplus was that we made more conservative estimates around revenue, and the way we balanced that was to reduce our capital spending significantly in FY twenty-one. And so this allocation helps restore some of our capital spending and target, targets it into an area that we've heard a lot of feedback, and it's been identified as a high priority, being roads and sidewalks. And then the last financial order, which is new, FY twenty-two oh five C, is now the one for the supplemental dog appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars. There were some unanticipated costs that arose during the year, and unless we appropriate this additional funds, we can't finish the, finish the dog park. And there was a memo attached to this order that explains what those costs were and how they're related to the cap of the landfill. It goes into more detail as to the need.
Thank you, Sean. You can take this down, and let me note that it is seven oh seven, so we are five minutes into the public forum. I'd like now to ask people who are in the audience to raise your hands if you would like to speak. So far, I only see one hand. Is there anyone else? Jim Pistrang, please enter the room, state your name, where you live, and proceed with your comments.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm first, somebody give me a thumbs up so I know that you actually can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Jim Pistrang. I'm a resident of District Two. And good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am the Chair of the Dog Park Task Force, and I am speaking in support of the request for seventy-five thousand dollars from the town to support the dog park. The dog park funding to date has come primarily from the Stanton Foundation, with additional funding provided through the Community Preservation Act and through private donations. The funds that are now being requested from the town are to meet unanticipated costs related to the protection of the landfill cap. The dog park has enjoyed overwhelming popular support from the enthusiastic community, community meetings in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, through town meeting and select board approval in two thousand eighteen, and through the approval process of numerous town boards and committees, including the Community Preservation Act Committee, the Conservation Commission, the LSSE Commission, the Design Review Board, and the Disability Access Advisory Committee. The volunteer Dog Park Task Force has been working tirelessly on the project since two thousand seventeen, and the task force is currently working to create a friends group that will support the ongoing needs of the park once it opens. The relatively small amount of funding that is requested at this time from the town will enable and ensure a successful completion of the project. Thank you for your support.
Jim, thanks for joining us this evening. Are there other comments from the audience? Please raise your hand. The charter requires that fifty percent of the time is reserved for people who are in the audience who would like to speak. And so I'm going to keep the public forum open until twelve, twelve minutes after seven. Are there any other people who would like to make public comment on these financial orders? Dorothy, we're going to have a time to chat, to discuss this later. And so in keeping with it being a public forum, can we hold off? Because we are voting on these at the later in the meeting. Are there any other attendees who would like to speak? I want to do a time check with the town clerk, with the clerk of the town council. Am I correct? It's seven twelve will satisfy the charter requirement.
I believe so. That gives us three more minutes.
My clock is different, okay. Why don't you tell us when we have, we are able to close?
Okay, we have a few more minutes, but it's, it's seven ten now. Our regular meeting starts at seven fifteen, so we have to go at least until then, or take a break.
I'm sure people would enjoy a break. Are there other people in the audience who would like to speak to any of the four financial orders? I'm going to give it one last call, and then I'm going to wait for Athena to tell me we have met the timing requirement.
We've met the timing requirement.
Okay, given that, I'm going to adjourn the public forum on this matter. And we will take a three-minute break, and we will be back at seven fifteen for the regular town council meeting. Please unmute, I mean mute, and take your picture. Need to adjourn the finance committee.
Yeah, that's why I raised my hand. I want to adjourn the finance committee. I want to thank the three resident members for coming. What we try and do is make sure that if there are comments that are adverse to our recommendation, it's important that all members hear those comments, and so your presence was very much appreciated, and see you tomorrow afternoon. Committee's adjourned.
Thank you, Andy.
Hi, Steve, we're just taking a break before the regular meeting starts at seven fifteen. We'll be back in two minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
As you return, please turn your video back on.
Counselor Schreiber has joined us. Would you please confirm that he can hear us, and we can hear him after you begin the meeting? Councilor Schreiber has joined us. Would you please confirm that he can hear us and we can hear him after you begin the meeting?
Right. I think I should do that for all the counselors as we open this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please turn your video on when you return. Okay, if you turn your video on when you return, I am going to start the meeting and we're still recording, correct? Thank you. Good evening. This is our third meeting. It is a regular town council meeting and we'll begin with taking role and calling a quorum. We have a quorum of the council present, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:18, 7:17. I'm going to call on each counselor because I want to make sure that now that we've gone back and forth a couple of times, everybody can still hear. When I call on you unmute, then please mute again. Shalini Balman.
I'm here.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Patty Angeles.
Present.
Darcy Dumont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is here and Mandy Johannicky.
Present.
Dorothy Pam. Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
As in with all our other meetings, this meeting is being recorded and is live on Amherst Media. If you have any tech technical difficulties, let Athena and I know. There are some announcements, but they are on the agenda and they're about upcoming meetings and upcoming committee meetings. And I want to call attention to the fact that there will be an announcement coming out about a special technology that we're going to be trying out with the Town Services and Outreach Committee as they look at issues surrounding the changes regarding Kendrick Park. Please look for that announcement. We're going to move to general public comment. There will be specific comment regarding the town manager's evaluation as we come to that agenda item and after the council has completed their discussion. So I'm asking now for people to raise their hand if they have specific general comment. Okay, see no hands. We're going to continue on with the agenda. We'll move to the consent agenda and Athena, could you please put that on the screen? The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed and it does not require a second. So the motion is as follows. To move the following items and the printed materials. Excuse me, and the printed materials motion motions there under and approve those items as a single unit. 8C is referral of potential changes to the town council policy regarding the control and regulation of the public ways regarding delegation of authority to the Board of License Commissioners for for lunch carts on streets and sidewalks to the Town Services and Outreach Committee. The next is 9A, 1 through 5, its approval of the following town manager appointments, Health Director, Senior Services Director, Council on Aging, Elementary School Building Committee, Public Arts Commission. And the final item is approval of the following town council meeting minutes, November 8th, 2021, regular town council meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Handakey seconds.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to move to the roll call. Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Darcy Dumont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I, Mandy Johannicky.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balman.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no resolutions or proclamations. And so we are going to continue at this time, our discussion of the town manager's performance evaluation. And we left off at from our last meeting with housing affordability. Are there comments? And let me just mention to those that have joined us. The idea is to make comments about the draft that is written as a memo to the town council. It's not to get into edits and it's not to get into debates. It's to make comments. This is not the last time you will see this. This is really the first time you've seen it. So are there any comments regarding housing affordability? Evan.
Yeah, I was curious about in the last paragraph of the evaluation summary, the clause, the future focus on housing is shifting to workforce housing and homeownership for low and moderate income families and individuals. I wasn't quite sure where that came from, regardless of whether I agree with that statement or not. I only found the word workforce in George's comments under this, and I only found the word homeownership in George's comments over this, although Dorothy mentioned it under economic vitality. And so I just wasn't, I wasn't sure. This to me felt a little bit more like goal setting or priority setting, but it didn't seem representative of more than two comments.
Okay. Got it. Alyssa?
Agree with Evan, and I'm not sure what you mean by this isn't the time for edits, so I'm just going to go ahead and say it. So on that page 10, second paragraph that starts town staff assisted, the second sentence, the manager and town staff secured a seasonal shelter and have continued. That should be clear that it's a new temporary site. They didn't secure a seasonal shelter. Craig's Doors worked with them to secure the continuation of the seasonal shelter that Craig's Doors has been managing, but in yet another location. So depending on how you look at this evaluation, he's had to do that twice.
I don't think that that would be considered editorial. I think that's substantive. Any further comments on housing affordability? How about racial equity and social justice? I'm sorry, Shalini, you had your hand up.
Yeah, it is going a little faster for me to read the memo and the comments that we have. So I'm this may be in the memo, but I read about the Craig's Door comment. But I think we need to wait, let me see, let me see if it's there or not. But anyway, I just wanted to highlight the fact that there were many issues related to how the funding or the the access to the to the showers and all of that, but also I'm just trying to figure out if that's a goal or an evaluation, but I guess that's more of a goal that we need to be behind with respect to of year round shelter for for Craig's Door. And I guess that's a goal and not, I don't know. It's a little early for me, but yes, just wanted to put that out there.
We appreciate that you were on a different part of the globe. Dorothy?
I found a problem in reading this. Having Craig's Door Shelter under housing affordability, that should be under no housing affordability. Because when we talk about affordable housing, I really don't think we're talking about temporary shelters. So that that is my point of view there. So I guess I would put it under social justice perhaps, but or because it's lack of housing affordability.
The reason that I it is here, by the way, is because of number three under the objective, which says very clearly ensuring the operation of a seasonal shelter. Shalini? Alyssa?
Yeah, I think that that's just one of the things like Dorothy just said, is one of the things we sort out as we're coming to be working on the next set of goals, right, is where do things fit? Because we find that every time we fill this out, two different people fill it out two different ways and the way their brain accumulates, the information is different. But as you just said, Lynn, it very clearly put it in that goal. So if we want to put it in a different goal next year, that's fine, but we can't take it out of the goal during the process.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on housing affordability? Okay, how about comments on racial equity and social justice? Mandy Jo.
Yeah, um, I don't have specifics, but I just felt like in reading this two paragraph summary, it didn't seem to capture what I thought I read in the comments, but I don't have specifics. It just didn't feel that way to me. But in looking at it again, one thing I guess I'm I'm seeing in this that it doesn't talk about, you know, the I think one counselor just put it as a rocky start. Other counselors put it as room for improvement in discussing items like this and going through this process and things like that, that that relate to the fostering a community free of fear, intimidation and violence. And ensuring that all community members are listened to and served by their public servants. And so I I don't have specifics, but I just in reading it initially, I just like, I don't feel like it captures everything that was said, and I admit that this would be a very hard one to do so. So I'm sorry, I don't have more specifics, but it was just a feeling I had.
I what it says to me is to review the comments again, look at this and see whether or not I can add some more flavor to it. Okay. Are there any other comments on racial equity and social justice? Shalini?
Yeah, again, I I'm just echoing what Mandy Jo was saying. That this is it's a very important issue and it's also a complex issue and it's it. This is a comment I'd made earlier that we need someone with expertise to facilitate these conversations and there was one other comment I had about this is, you know, while I I commend the different resources we've made available to the staff like Gare and all of that, I think it would be also good to get a sense of what is coming out of those participation, like how many people, like we know that that program was made available, but we don't know how many people are participating in that, what is the impact of that? And and then, of course, we already agreed to hire a DEI officer to implement this goal and to oversee this goal. So that's that's really good. I guess all this to say that, yeah, we need to somehow bring out more into that memo.
Okay. Darcy?
Can we just bring up the memo so the public can see?
They have it in their packet. And I, we haven't been doing it that way.
This would be easy for all of us to see what you're talking about. You know?
Darcy, do you have copies of the memo?
Yes, yes, I'm but I'm guessing that there are members of the public out there that aren't that facile to be able to look at it while we're doing this. So but
the the memo, this is just our first pass on the memo. The memo is in the packet and it's public. It was made public at 5 o'clock. If there's other counselors who feel we should show it on the screen, please let me know. Okay, Pat? Please unmute.
I do not believe we should show it on the screen. This is very time consuming the way we're doing this, and I understand the reasons why. That just makes it more time consuming as we flip through. Let's move forward the way we're working.
Thank you. Are there any comments, further comments on racial equity and social justice? Pat, you have your hand up. Okay, we're going to move to management goals. The first one is administration, leadership and personnel. Are there comments on this goal on the write up? Things you would like to draw my attention to, things you feel I either misstated and or need to be stronger about. Alyssa?
It's not about you personally. I know that must really feel that way.
I realize that, but you know, I wrote it, so I have to take the hits. Okay.
So in that vein, on page 12.
Yes.
Under evaluation summary, where it's on the third line, it says counselors have expressed concern. That needs to be beefed up. Because we have more than expressed concern about staffing levels, diversity, recruitment, crap, morale and turnover. Maybe just pick some comments that seem similar, but stronger. I feel like many of these summaries are exceedingly kind and occasionally airing a little on the content free side. And so we want to give actual valuable input. And so I think just saying concern in in these kind of cases is a little tricky.
Okay. Are there other comments about administration, leadership and personnel? Shalini?
Okay, so this was the comment I wanted to make, which is general that and it's not reflected and I don't know how to reflect it in this document, but the fact that I've heard from many current, and we saw some of this in the staff evaluations, but also in talking to past employees that Amherst is a hard town to work for. And I think that is something we have to keep in context when we are evaluating the town manager. And it's something that we don't, it's hard to say. But I've heard it again and again that that, I mean, on the one hand, it's great that we have, this is not to say that the community and residents should not be, I know this is, this is all related to the town manager evaluation. That's why I need to say it now. Is that, yeah, we, on the one hand, it's great to have engagement and participation, but what we don't have is processes where people can ask questions without it being a personal attack and accusations and blame and and there are, I've heard from several people that there's been burnout in staff and people leaving that, and that's not reflected in. And so I think that's something that should be reflected somehow. The other part that I wanted to speak about was the town manager taking on too many roles and responsibilities and spreading too thin, which probably is reflected in the memo. And the other part that's also what I've heard and it's challenging is how to, especially in the context of difficult tough conversations, is creating a culture, how to balance and have the back of the staff, but also have a culture of self reflection and growth. So these are all the different things I've been hearing all through and it's it's hard to talk about it publicly, but I'm just putting it out there that it's on all of us to create these processes, but also maybe HR department or someone needs to be doing something to. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Andy.
Yes, I think that the one thing that I would call attention to for rethinking for a second is on the top of page 13, which was, I guess, second sentence, we suggested town manager consider comprehensive staffing and salary study, not just fire EMS, but of all staff. I think if, from my recollection of looking at the comments, that fire EMS was mentioned quite a few times, and I'm not sure that it wouldn't therefore be appropriate to strengthen that a little bit by saying something slightly different, like, and we suggest town manager consider comprehensive staffing and salary study of all staff and in particular, fire EMS.
Okay. Kathy, sorry, I'm I need to pause to write things down.
Oh, that's okay. I I shouldn't talk while you were writing things down either. So you've sort of said the point about roads and sidewalks, but this actually, it was transparent way, how do we make decisions, but then also plans? You know, what are the plans? So I would just separate those two words into two sentences. This came up in finance last week when we were putting more money from, we were appropriating it from the excess cash. And one of our non-voting members said, and where's the list? Do we have a list? And I go, uh-uh, we don't have a list, you know, like which sidewalks, which roads? So not only do we not have, so just separate it a little bit. And and I know we've been told it's impossible, but it's it's set as a goal that just so we know the money goes into some pot and then it gets used, but it's not clear to us that it's gets directed in the way even when we explicitly ask for a particular expenditure. So I would beef that up. And you know, I agree with Andy's point that lumping the way fire and EMS, it wasn't that it wasn't as much a salary issue as a staffing issue. So you might want to separate those two thoughts. You know that we we actually talked about a a study of staffing and it may may or may not also be a money issue as most to people are working extra hours and and not an over an overwork issue. And I don't know which it is because we'd asked for more of a sense of it. So I would just split them because I think they're separate, they're separate concepts.
Got it. Are there other comments on administration, leadership and personnel? Just one second, I need to just finish this. Okay, Alyssa.
I know it's difficult because you had the future goals in mind when you were writing the summary, but at the top of page 13, it says going forward, the town council again requests. So first of all, that's a future goal that's got nothing to do with this evaluation. What's factual in this evaluation is that the town council has not yet received a clear list of priorities for road and sidewalk improvements, period. Then, sure, I assume we'll cover that in the next set of goals, but this just makes it sound like it's a nice to do and it's something we've been asking for and didn't get, and that should be documented here.
Okay, are there any other comments on that item? Management goal to finance. We may now be moving into those areas where people feel they haven't had enough time to read. So let me just reiterate, this is our first pass. It's not the only pass. Are there any comments on finance at this time? Then, long term vision. Alyssa.
I'm very sorry, but at the top of page 15, the same comment I made about the previous thing. As we move into the next year is not relevant to this conversation. This is this year's evaluation. The goals are separate conversation. It's not that we look forward to, it's that we haven't heard anything about the majority of things that are written in this paragraph, despite asking for them. And so if you want to rephrase it, that's okay. But again, this just seems like, gee, it'd be nice if we explored some things, all of which we actually asked to have done and didn't get done before lots of reasons. But I just, we need to be clear about what happened and what didn't happen, not what we hope might happen someday.
Long term vision. Mindy Jo.
Yeah, in the second paragraph of this, one of the sub sections of the describe areas that need more attention is the planning for the use of one vacant elementary school, new senior center, early childhood center, youth empowerment center. I read that and I go, have we decided we're doing all of them or not? And so I guess language that qualifies that as such as or potentially planning for the potential of or something like that. And I make that comment not to say anything or to have people infer anything about my belief on any of these, but we need to be careful to create expectations or not with what our language is doing.
Got it. Alyssa.
Exactly, and to be clear that we're not talking about one group's recommendations, but in fact, we've never discussed that we need a new senior center. We've never discussed that we need a new early childhood center or the other two recommendations. So we just need to not offer those as theoretical things just because one individual or two individual counselors thought they were a good idea, which I'm not saying they aren't, but they were not part of the goals and they might be part of the goals, but they aren't yet.
Okay. Are there any more comments on long term visions? And I've realized that community engagement is misnumbered. It should be Roman numeral four under management. Are there any comments on community engagement? Shalini. You're, Shalini, you need to unmute.
Yes, thank you. Yes, 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 okay. Again, commending all the good work that's done, that's already listed, the AD assistive technology engage website, work with UMass is hopeful, but I still feel like white swaths of people are not being included, and we really, really need to emphasize that because then there how our big capital investments are impacting people and what or the needs of different community members are not taken into consideration when we are making our capital investments and important decisions. And while we continue to do the usual things, I think we really do need to think of new ways. And and that will be really important, especially when we hire. And I'm going into now goals, future goals, but the new hires of DEI and economic development directors. And I think what's not been done well right now is how do we coordinate between the different committees and communities for outreach? So and one other thing is about the C click fix. I think it's a great tool, but it's only being used halfway to receive information from residents, but we're not communicating back. And that's sort of highlighted, I guess, in the part about DPW and how they're handling the communication with the public.
Okay. Kathy.
I just, I think I said this earlier in my quick comments, but I want to emphasize the word financial. And when we redo the goals, I think I would put the strategic agreement with UMass in a different place than community engagement. But I think the we have a wording that says the financial impact and we don't have a strategic plan. So I would, I would emphasize those words about the higher education and I wasn't the, those were comments I had, but I, when I read others, I saw a couple others pulled that out too. So it's just, it's a rephrasing that Lynn as two parts that we worked with them on COVID and we did a lot of good work on that, but then there's this other set of issues.
Okay. Mindy Jo.
Yeah, similar comments. The DPW one, you know, doesn't really indicate what the issue is. It just says still needs to be improvement in the process, maybe be a little more specific about what the concern really is. And then I similar, you know, what Kathy just said, the the paragraph on page 18 that starts is just not strong enough. I don't think about given what the counselors had said about that.
Anything else, Mindy Jo? Dorothy?
What I'm saying, of course, is sounds more critical than it should because we've not been able to do things in person. But all of these things that look really good, a Zoom cup of joe, Zoom community chats and the Engage Amherst website are only reaching a very small number of people. And the C clicks fix, when I read through this earlier, I said, you know, we need a workshop on that. It's a great idea, but most people I know really don't have it on their phones and don't know how to use it. And I think that's something that people would like to use very much. If you're really going to have community engagement, we're going to have to, when it's safe, have meetings in where people live, you know, get out of Zoom, get out of town hall and just go to where they are if you really want to find out what they think about things. And I'm hoping that in the spring, we're going to be able to do those things. Because I see a lot of lists of things like this at my college, but they're not being used by most of the faculty and they have all this stuff there, but people aren't using them. We need face to face. Thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Two things, as we, you know, as we read each other's, we realize that each of us brings very different focus to this, and that's one of the reasons it's so valuable that we each actually write comments rather than just check off boxes because we all have different areas of expertise and different experiences we're bringing. In light of that, I want to point out that I wrote more than a page of flat text about the last item on page 18, which is discussing ways to maximize the contributions of town multiple member bodies, which is in, is okay to write that. But I'm begging my colleagues to force themselves to read at least, I don't know, a fifth of the full page of text I wrote and come up with something else in addition to, we should talk about it. Because I gave a lot of examples of how not well we've been doing in that over the last several years. It's not a conversation we need to brainstorm from day one. We need to look at some real specifics, possibly some of those things could be picked up in the actual new set of goals, but it's far more than just a commitment or a should discuss ways of doing it. It was supposed to have been done over the past year. Nothing was accomplished in the area in terms of what I look at, except for the very helpful onboarding of the AHRA. So we have a long way to go on that, and I just don't think that sentence covers enough on a completely different matter, but one that several others have mentioned. I don't think that any new counselor or member of the public would have any idea based on what's written in the first paragraph on page 18 where it says, need to push for more forthright discussions leading to written strategic agreements with UMass, Amherst College and Hampshire College makes us sound as elected officials as completely ineffective, useless humans. I find that very frustrating. We have a strategic partnership agreement with UMass that has been expired since before the pandemic. We have never had a written agreement with Amherst College or Hampshire College despite us asking for it for several years. So the idea that we would simply say the town manager and staff need to push, no. The town manager needs to listen to us and accomplish these things because we constantly hear from residents about why we don't have this and they're looking at it as our fault. And it is not our fault. It is completely outside of our control. We've asked for it repeatedly. We've been ignored and that needs to be clearly addressed here as opposed to saying it would be nice if they did it in the future.
Thank you. Are there other comments with regard to community engagement? Okay, are there comments with regard to relationship with the town council? Mindy Jo.
Yeah, um, in the first paragraph, the very end statement says that through various departments provides excellent and necessary support to town council committees. But I know I myself and maybe others wrote that it's could use some improvement. And you know, it's while the support is there some for some things, it's it's not always there for other things. And I thought that was reflected in more than just my comments. I'd have to go back and specifically do that, but that doesn't seem to be reflected here. And I have to look a little, this is the section I barely read before we convened again. So I have to look more to see if other comments regarding the relationship made it in.
Okay. Are there other comments on this preliminary pass? Mindy, yes, Mindy Jo.
Yeah, I feel like the other one that's missing is resolving issues at the administrative level to avoid unnecessary action at the council level. I know at least two of us mentioned that, and that's not in here at all, I don't think. And so that needs dealt with somewhere.
Alyssa.
So along those lines, I know this is where things start to get difficult, right? When there's a wide variety of strongly held positions by by several people. And I understand that if indeed, again, I'm not finished with everyone's comments, but if indeed Mandy Jo and I are the only two that mentioned the particular item that she just mentioned, I understand why, as a summary, that may not have seemed like something you need to bring up then. Because after all, only two of 13, well, I guess you say two of 10, because three people didn't write any comments whatsoever. So I suppose, but three out of 10, only two people out of 10 mentioned it, so maybe it doesn't count. And this is where the part that you keep emphasizing that this is our first reading is so important because as we go home, stay home and continue to read this, other counselors may have, and it may still turn out that everybody else thinks I'm the only one that believes these things. I don't know what else that sentence means other than the things I talked about. I don't think anybody could have rated highly on that sentence based on the examples I give. But if I am the outlier, that's fine. But the the point of doing this whole elaborate process is that there are things that individuals think of that not everybody thought of. So we then have to decide if as a group, we agree with those things or not. And I realize you can't really be the arbiter of that as the person who writes the summary. And that's why it's so important for us to continue to have a conversation about it. So we know, is that a strongly held belief by the majority of people? Or is that really only a strongly held belief by one or two people? And so, thank you.
Okay, Kathy.
I I just want to build on Alyssa's comment, just on a, I don't know how to handle. I, I, I just want to build on Alyssa's comment, just on a, I don't know how to handle it in the context of what we're going through. But I thought some people made excellent suggestions for ways to improve, observing things that were less efficient. And whether or not four people mentioned it or one person mentioned it, if we all agreed, it would be a good idea. So Lynn, I don't know how we, we do that because you're trying to be very balanced here, which I think is a good idea. But if I had thought about it when I was writing it, I definitely would have made the comment. And then if we get a presentation at the council and we ask questions, the same people don't have to present the whole thing at the council subcommittee. Again, they should come with all the questions answered. I, I think that's just a recommendation for a better way of, of managing everybody's time. So, 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 so you've been good at not saying only one person said it, therefore it doesn't go in the summary. But if it is something that we all think would be a great idea. And Paul is sitting here in the room, so he's also hearing it. So I don't feel like we have to write every sentence that we need. But I, I thought that was a good observation in finance that almost always happens. We send questions in, we get them answered during the meeting, we don't get a whole presentation again. So the finance experience generally hasn't been get presented, presented the same thing again. So it's, it's even the experience of the committees may be different depending on which committee you're on. So.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I want to underline that when I answered it, I didn't feel that I had to say everything that was relevant on the cause because that's kind of time I don't have. So that's why I've been enjoying reading these. Many things are brought up by other people and I say, yes, that's true. That's interesting. So I, I don't think it should be on how many people brought something up. I, I do agree, we have to have some method of saying, how many people think this is important to add to it or whatever? Because what we're seeing is, is a, is a playing out of a group process where when you have enough people who are concerned about something, you will get most of the points covered. But you don't expect everybody to lay it all out. So I, I think we need to be aware of that and understand that our, our group picture, we need to have a, we probably agree with an awful lot of things that other people have said. And that has to be evidence in the final summary.
George?
I guess I'm seeing two things happening here, sort of in parallel tracks, the creation of a summary that, that most of us can, or all, we always can be satisfied with. And I see you Lynn, working on that and you'll make adjustments and we will look at it again. And, and maybe make final comments, but that's sort of a product that you'll produce that hopefully will reflect the overall view of the evaluations. At the same time, we're working and we'll start tonight, I take it, on the goals for the coming year, for the performance goals for the town manager. And I think we're getting some good ideas coming out of that as well. So that's a second product and it comes through GOL. And though obviously it's, it's ultimately a council product. But many of these ideas that people are having, and I'm certainly taking notes, eventually could come to GOL as we produce a second draft of that document. Tonight we have a first draft and that's just a draft. So I see two things happening. I hope that's what everyone else is seeing. And just a suggestion about where to send some of these things that are really looking forward as opposed to just agreeing on what the evaluation is for this year.
And that is the reason that the evaluation is immediately followed by goal setting. Are there other comments? Shalini?
I just had a question. Can someone remind me why we get these, the memo and the everyone's evaluations right before the meeting and not ahead of time?
Alyssa, would you like to answer that since you're the authority on this one?
It's an expression of opinion to a quorum outside of a posted meeting. If I write the town manager's evaluation that I think and I send it out to other people, I have now expressed my opinion outside of a posted meeting. Similarly, when Lynn prepares the summary for us, one could arguably do a process where she just go, where we just read those. But many people have found it useful over the years. Once the town started complying with open meeting law associated with town manager evaluations to actually have a framework to find ourselves within, right? So I read mine against the summary. I read yours against the summary and we say, yep, it's missing this, it's not missing that. But it has to be done in this boring way because otherwise it's an expression of opinion outside of posted meeting.
In fact, on page 20, somebody who wrote one of these a long time ago, in fact cited the Attorney General's Office's interpretation of the open meeting law with regard to this. And that explains this really bizarre, if you will, process where, you know, I, I chain myself to the kitchen counter. I read everything, I write down what I think. And then I subject myself to a meeting like this, which I'm fine with, gang. I really appreciate all of the comments you've made. I appreciate the work you put into the evaluation. And I will take this and then see where we go next. Andy?
During the, during the charter process, I actually did some research on behalf of the Charter Commission and sent it to the chair. We, in, what the person I called was a friend who is at that time teaching at one of the public administration in the United States at the University of Kansas. And he said, when we were talking about how a council evaluates a manager, that this is a unique state, that there are only two states that have an open meeting law provision like ours that require the evaluation to be done in public. And he commiserated with me, but there was nothing we could do but recognize it.
Thanks, Andy. Makes us all real feel even more special. Is there any other comment at this time? Again, I want to thank you for your thoughtful comments and you know, prior to this meeting and tonight. Unless there is any other comment, then I would like to move on to the action items. Alyssa?
So this is the tiresome part where Alyssa says, and so what we're going to do next, I realize we're going to have other conversations about goals tonight. But as you indicated earlier, since we've already discussed this in public, the things that we've said in public, we can go ahead and share with you in an email if you feel like you want, or we come up with some brilliant wording that we can offer you. And then you will bring us back a revision already next week. Is that the plan?
I don't think you're going to see it until the sixth.
That makes a lot more sense to me. I don't want you to chain yourself to anything.
I have to chain myself to a turkey because I have a lot of people coming for dinner. So Alyssa, you're correct. I will ask that you get me comments. I will ask that you get them to me no later than Monday of next week. So that I have time to write a revision, which is in itself, I'd like them even earlier. And, but one of the things I want to absolutely stress, do not send it to the whole council or to any other counselor than me. Okay? Now, we did state that we would have public comment at this point with regard to the annual evaluation of the town manager. So I do need to turn to public comment and say, please raise your hand if you would like to make public comment with regard to the evaluation of the town manager. M. Martha Hanner, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. And please keep your comments, you know, more than three minutes.
Martha Hanner, District Five. I just wanted to say thank you for the cup of Joes over the course of the year. I always find them interesting and a chance for discussion on various topics. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Martha. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to action item A, which is the financial orders. They are in your packet, they are attached to the motions. And Sean made a brief presentation about them earlier. And so what I'm going to do is call on Andy Steinberg, Chair of the Finance Committee, to make comments about the Finance Committee's review of these.
I would actually, if she's willing, ask Kathy Shane, who wrote the report half of the committee regarding this subject. And I thank Kathy for doing that. And also did not see whether it went into the packet, but it should have gone into the packet, was emailed to all members of the committee, but needs to get into the packet also, but hasn't.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, I, I'll be very short because Sean covered most of the discussion. So during, during the meeting, we talked about, and the memo summarizes the amount of free cash that we had this year, which was well above what it's been in the past. So these financial orders that are not, the, other than the ones that are transferring money to the stabilization fund and to the reparations fund. The other amount is to hold the free cash amount to no more than 5% of the budget. So the, the staff presented us with a package that did that. We, we focused on, on two item, three items, actually, on the OPEB, it's catching up. We had cut, cut back on the amount we were putting in over a two-year period because of COVID. And this amount will bring us back to the planned trajectory of that. So we talked about that a little bit. And then the big one, the main one we were discussing is the roads, sidewalks and dog park. Where during the discussion, what became clear on the dog park piece was that the reason they run into this unanticipated expense is that the cap went further out than they'd originally known because there wasn't a good survey. And it was if the fence posts for the dog park went in to the land, it was going to puncture the cap. So they've had to come up with a different way of putting the fence posts for the fence. Otherwise, there won't be a fence on the dog park. So that's the issue with the cap. As, as Dave Zelmick said, I think it was going, there were going to be 45 holes in the cap if we put the fence in without putting a cement footing. We decided it was different enough from roads and sidewalks that it deserved to be split out into a separate order. And there was discussion about some of the other needs that have been put off. But we, there was general consensus that roads and sidewalks were high on everybody's priority list. And indeed, I raised, although no one else picked me up on it, whether we didn't want to put more of that amount of money into the sidewalk side because we, we've had a longstanding goal of putting some new sidewalks in as well as repairing them. This, so I see this as at least 250,000 of that. And Paul, it would be really nice if we had some sense of what can be done with this amount of money. So we talked a little bit about what does that buy you? But that's, I think that's my summary and you've got it in the, in the memo. So between the moving money into stabilization funds and the appropriation for, for the immediate uses, we bring our free cash down to the targeted level. And that's what these financial orders are doing. And for this, we only need a majority vote. Paul's memo was clear about that. Once we put it into the stabilization fund, if we want to bring the money back out for a purpose, it needs a two thirds vote. But we're appropriating out of free cash at this point. I'm done.
Sean or Sonia, yeah, there you are, Sonia. Do either of you have anything you would like to add?
The only thing I might say, and Sonia can reinforce this, is the comment we heard about maybe allocating more towards sidewalks and less towards roads. My understanding from Sonia is that we can do that since it's all within the same order. If, if we determine there's a greater need in sidewalks, we could raise that about a little bit or shift that allocation up. And since it's all within the same appropriation, it would be okay.
Okay, Sonia, anything?
I agree with Sean.
Okay.
You're not going to get that very often, so.
You're not.
Take it when you can get it. Thank you both very much for all your work on this. Dorothy, you have a question?
Yes, this is the same point I wanted to make earlier. I would be happier if instead of using the short term dog park, we said dog park slash landfill cap. Because I think it opens up the council and the town manager to misunderstandings by the public. Because you, for, for obvious reasons, period.
Okay. Are there other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to start with, just want to make sure I start with the right first one. Okay, I'm going to start with the first motion. In accordance with chapter, section, charter, section 5.6, having been published on the Town Bulletin Board for a minimum of 10 days on November 9, 2021, a public forum held on November 22, 2021. And having been reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee Report on November 22, 2021, to adopt Council Order FY22-12A, an order appropriating from free cash to the stabilization fund as shown on page seven of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Is there any further discussion or question? Shalini?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification about the cap question and comment. So if he.
We're not on that one yet. Can we, let, let me wait till we get to that order, okay?
Okay, okay.
Are there any other questions on this order? Seeing none, I'm going to start the vote. Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I, Andy Joe Hanifey.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balmam.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
It's unanimous. We are going to go on to the next one. In accordance with Charter Section 5.6, having been published on the Town Bulletin Board for a minimum of 10 days on November 9, 2021, a public forum held on November 22, 2021. And having been reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee Report of November 22, 2021, to adopt Council Order FY22-12B, an order appropriating from free cash to the OPED Trust Fund as shown on pa, page eight of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we're going to start with Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I, Mandy Joe Hanifey.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balmam.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
It's unanimous. Moving on to the next one, and this is the one where it's been split. The first one will deal with the funds for roads and sidewalks. And then we will come to the dog park one. In accordance with Charter Section 5.6, having been published on the Town Bulletin Board for a minimum of 10 days on November 9, 2021, and a public forum held on November 22, 2021. And having been reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee Report of November 22, 2021, to adopt Council Order FY22-05B, an order appropriating funds for the Town of Amherst Capital Program dash roads and sidewalks as shown on page nine of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further question or discussion? Alyssa?
I would just like the minutes to reflect that we don't have any details of what that money would be used for. It's not changed to the motion, just that it be. It's not changed to the motion, just that it be sm- noted in the minutes, that it's not, there's some other documents to look at. We don't know.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to start the vote. Lynn Griesmer's an I, Mandy Johanneke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Erin Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balne.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Please make that the, make sure the record shows Alyssa's comment. The final financial order is in accord, in accordance with Charter, Section 5.6, and having been published on the Town Bulletin Board for a minimum of 10 days on November 9, 2021, a public forum held on November 22, 2021, and having been reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee Report of November 22, 2021, to adopt Capital Council Order FY22-05C, an order appropriating funds for the Town of Amherst Capital Program dash supplemental dog park appropriation as shown on page 10 to 11 of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Are there questions or comments? Dorothy, I mean, Darcy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that in reading the memo that we got from the town manager about, or from, from Dave Zolmack about dog park proposed expenditure, it seemed to indicate to me that the 75,000 is an expense we wouldn't have had if we weren't putting a dog park there. And unless I'm wrong, you can, you can tell me if I'm wrong about that. And I feel like when we commit to projects that are grant-funded or privately funded, we really need to understand that it's very likely that the, that the proposers are going to come back to us with a request for additional taxpayer funds for one reason or another. And also that we have to remember when, when our very precious staff person, Jason, Jason Skiles works on this project, he's not working on another worthy project. And that we rarely hire any new staff. So we're, we're just use, you know, we're, we're we're deciding how we are allocating our precious staff. And I'm not against having a dog park that's completely privately funded, but I'm not willing to vote to spend any taxpayer funds on this when I, I personally feel we have far greater priorities that are not fully funded. So I suggest that the project find the needed funds from donors. That, that may mean they have to delay it for a while, but I think they need to find the funds.
Additional comments? Shalini?
Yeah, I wasn't clear about that. I think the, the question that I had was, would the cap be, would that need fixing if the dog park was not there?
I believe Dave Zomack is in the audience. He is. And would you please bring him into the room? Hi, Dave. Nope, you just brought Eric Backrack, and I think you didn't need to do that one.
I was here.
Okay, David? There you are. Did you hear the question, David?
I did, from, from Shalini?
Yes.
Yeah, so very quickly, it's important to note that the cap is not damaged. We, we didn't damage the cap. We can't damage the cap. So we came up with an engineering solution that we worked on with our contractor, with our staff, and then we vetted with DEP. And together, we came up with a solution that would allow the dog park to be finished at the same time protecting the cap in perpetuity. And that was, in part, the, the fence solution that I talked to you about last meeting and outlined in the memo. So the cap will be protected, and the dog park can be completed.
Shalini, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to say that I respect the work of so many people who have been working on different committees, and so I am going to support it. But I do echo Darcy's comment and that when we pass projects like that, it's an investment and of our town's staff and resources and can, you know, and, and something that we should definitely be keeping in mind moving forward given our limited resources. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I would like to combine those comments. I do not want to stop work on the dog park because that will cost more money. But I do agree with Shalini that this is an opportunity for some continued fundraising. So I think we should go ahead using town money because that's the cheapest way to go. But that there should be additional fundraising, just as with the Jones Library, I believe that we have an understanding that if the, there turns out to be a need for additional funds, that the library was not going to come to the town for it, but would seek additional fundraising. So that, that is my kind of compromise on this because I do think that Darcy and Shalini have brought up valuable points. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I just want to restate, I think Shalini's question was, were it not for the ballpark, we had, dog park, would we have to spend the 75,000? And I think Dave just said, no, we have to spend it because the cap doesn't need it otherwise. We haven't hurt the cap. This is to protect it. So this is an expense directly related to the dog park, not that, you know, we, a, a week or so ago, it looked like we had to invest some money in the cap regardless, but it's because there's about to be a dog park there and the fence situation. So, so it is, we are voting on an expenditure that is due to the dog park, not that the cap needs a repair job. It, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. And thank you, David. Yes, David?
I just want to make two quick comments. Number one, the Dog Park Task Force has been involved in private fundraising, and they have raised money already that they have put into the, to the project. And as Jim Pistrang, who is the Chair of the Task Force, indicated a few moments ago, they are planning to raise more money for the operation and, and ongoing ma- maintenance of the park. So I just wanted to address that and put it out there. The other thing is that, you know, town staff, be it myself, or planning staff, or engineering staff, we work across the board on a, on a whole host of projects, Jason Skiles, Paul Deathie, or from playgrounds to dog parks to, you know, if pickleball courts get approved by the CPA and recommended to you, the town engineer will be involved in pickleball courts or new filters and other things at Mill River Pool. So across the board, the town engineer, town planning staff, building inspection staff are all involved in these projects from, from the get-go. So that's just the way we do things. And, and by and large, I think it gets great projects like Golf Park built, so for the community. So thanks.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that Dog Park has really been talked about for a long period of time. I think that it arose when there was some concern about dogs being walked off leash in conservation areas and feeling that we needed to explore that possibility. It was discussed in several town meetings that I can recall leading up to select board discussions about creating the Dog Park Task Force to help the sta- work with the staff on designing and planning. That it was a tremendous volunteer effort of a large number of people who participated in the task force and it's, in support of the task force's work to design the park, find the location that was best suited and to seek funds. And I guess last, I would point out, it is not entirely grant-funded because we also have Community Preservation Act funds going into it. Oh, this has been something that the town has had a long commitment to that has, well, well before we were a council and before the char- there was a charter that created the council. And this is the, the culmination of a longtime town commitment, and I'm hoping to see it at an end.
Are there any other comments? Okay, then we're going to bring this to a vote. We're going to start with Mandy Johanneke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balne.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Dement.
No.
And Lynn Griesmer is an I. It is 12 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and nobody absent. We are now going to go on to the dispersed discussion of the town manager's performance goals. And I am going to turn this over to GOL, to George and his other committee members. Andy, do you have your hand up for a reason? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm wondering if Athena could put up the, the redlined version of the.
She is prepared to do that.
Great, that would be great, thank you. So while that's going up on the screen, the basic approach here of GOL was simply to take the existing document and revise it without making any additions of new goals and just taking out anything that had already been accomplished or was no longer relevant and changing dates. And the very first point I want to make is that it's not the case that we were thinking of giving Paul 10 days next year where he could do whatever the hell he wanted. So it should actually be December 31, 2022, I believe, would be the right date. And other than that, that was the, that was supposed to be a little touch of humor. So that was one little mistake, I'm afraid, we didn't catch. So January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022. And then the rest is simply edits and taking out strikes, strikeouts of things that are no longer appropriate or relevant. And there should not be anything in there that is new. And everything new should either come as a result of this evening's discussion and/or things that you will send to me for the next draft from GOL.
Are there other people from GOL who would like to comment at this time? Darcy?
Yeah, I wasn't part of the GOL discussion. But I, I do have a comment about the, the climate action goal. Should I save it for? How is this working in this meeting? Or this is going back to GOL or?
It is going back to GOL. This is our first reading. It's going to be an opportunity. So since this is, you're not commenting based on being at the meeting, I'd like to go to the, to Alyssa Brewer, who has her hand up. Alyssa?
Okay, so I'm confused about how we keep changing the timeline for the town manager evaluation. First, it magically got pushed from its many, longer-than-a-decade time of August to November. I think we have perhaps all wondered how well that's working out, given not only our schedule, but also the election cycle we just went through. And now we're looking at performance goals that don't start until January 1, when we obviously intend to adopt them before Jan. If they're going to start January 1, why bother? Let's just have the new council do it. They should be starting now. The, the goals, I, I, I don't know what you think we're doing with this in-between period. And if the goals are through December 31, thank you, George. I don't know when you think you're going to do the next evaluation, in January of '23? I, I, I'm lost as to what's happening here in terms of timing, and I appreciate the updates. I just don't understand the timing.
Okay, Darcy?
Yeah, I just, on the climate action goal, I, I agree with Mandy Jo's comment that she made during the evaluation discussion that, you know, there is some, has been some confusion about how climate action and racial equity goals get implemented. And what is up for implementation right now is the 2025 plan, a portion of which will get implemented during the next fiscal year, which is not a calendar year, but it, so that's a little confusing too. But and that, that plan includes a lot of individual actions that are put in there and are targeted at reducing emissions by just about exactly 25% of our greenhouse gas emissions to fulfill that goal of 25% emissions reduction by 2025. And so the act, all those actions are included in the official town municipal vulnerability preparedness, you know, CARP plan. And ECAC is working with the Finance Director to, to determine what action should be prioritized for the funding that's already been put forward for FY22. And for, and, you know, putting out a proposal for FY23, working again with the Finance Director. So I guess, just so that we don't complicate matters, I would suggest that we change the wording, instead of saying instead of requiring the town council to weigh in on each separate individual action that, instead of saying that may be adopted by the town council, say something instead like that may be prioritized for the calendar year 2022, or something like that. So, and I can, I don't know whether that's something that we decide here now, or just we get back to GOL or what, but, and I think that the same could be said for the racial equity goal, although I'm just not as familiar with that as I am with the climate action.
Okay, Darcy, thank you. Andy?
Yes, a minor point. And correcting dates, I think George corrected the first one, which was the end date of the year. But by way down in the second paragraph, where it says FY22, it should be the calendar year 2022, because the fiscal year is not the calendar year.
Darcy, you still have your hand up, but I'm going to go to George Ryan.
Want to begin to respond to Alyssa's concerns. The change in date in part, as I recall, was due to at least two factors. There may be more that my colleagues can help me with. But one had to do with the fiscal year and the, the burden on, on the council's, but also on Paul doing goals in the middle of the, doing it by the fiscal calendar. And the second had to do with trying to match the fact that these are council goals and hence adopted by a particular council at mid-year. So for instance, the new council coming in will be presented with a set of goals, which they're perfectly free to change or revise. But they essentially reflect their term, at least the next year of it. Remember at one point, we were thinking of. Remember, at one point, we were thinking of doing this for two years, and that's still another option. In other words, setting two-year goals rather than one-year goals. And obviously, some of these, these various goals have multi-years. So as Darcy points out, the climate action goals, the social equity goals are not just, you know, focused on a single year, but we're trying to give Paul some sense of direction, either for one year or two. Right now, we're doing one year, but that could be changed to two years. Um, we're trying to give him some sense of this is what um, we want you to do in the coming year. Um, and so um, those are the two reasons that I recall. Perhaps others have others, or they can articulate it more clearly, but in particular, it had to do with the election cycle that um, and so as far as when the, this would be done for the, the next fiscal year, I would assume that G O L as part, and certainly I'll put this in my, my chair duties document to the next committee of G O L. I would assume sometime in November, they would begin the process of, as we have done here, of sending a draft to the council um, for council comments, and then uh, shape, sharpening that or shaping that, and bringing it back to the council as we will. Um, and hopefully in time for a, a vote sometime in December 6th or December 20th at some point, we will do that. So that's kind of the thinking behind this.
Evan?
Uh, I was gonna bring up a different point. So if uh, if Alyssa wanted to respond to that, um, to keep it within this topic, I'd happily have her go first.
Alyssa? No, she does not.
Okay, um, so I, I really appreciate uh, G O L sort of taking a very simple approach of just updating and doing minor minor fixes um, to these. A- at the same time, um, to me, um, there have been some things that have happened in the past year um, that wouldn't have been reflected in these goals, and I think do need to be reflected in the next one. Um, one I think is um, the creation of the Reparation Stabilization Fund and the creation of the A H R A. Um, and so I feel like for the racial equity and social justice goal to not mention either of those, um, seems um, i- i- it seems to be something missing. And then the other part of it is, um, we do say portions of part A and B of the Community Safety Working Group Report. Um, we call out C R E S specifically because we had called out an alternative to policing in community health and safety before. Um, but given that we are about to go through the establishment of a brand-new town agency um, with D I, to me, it seems like that also should be called out specifically and not just sort of hinted at with um, portions of part A and B, because that's something that we've already seen a plan, and now it needs to be implemented. So to me, um, I re- I respect that G O L tried to keep this really simple, and I, and I support that in many ways. But to me, those are two things that probably should be called out very specifically in the next set of goals. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Uh, Mandy Jo.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to potentially see added to these. Um, and I'll try to go through them fairly quickly with climate action. Um, I'm, I, I don't know whether this is appropriate for a goal or not, but we are about, from the time we took office to the 2025 climate action goals, about halfway there. And so I'm curious or thinking that maybe at some point, we need to know how close we are to meeting those climate action goals for 2025, that reduction in greenhouse gases, and we won't know that unless we do a study of some sort or make that a policy goal potentially. I wouldn't recommend doing that until C C A is adopted, because I think that's part of one of the ways we're going to get there. Um, but should we put that somewhere in climate action, some sort of reporting on the progress of meeting the 2025 climate action goals that we've adopted? Um, in the four major capital investments, I would actually like stronger wording regarding fire and D P W based on all of the comments that were written on that policy goal for the evaluation for the past year's work um, to strengthen that language regarding fire and D P W, whether it's to actually identify a location for D P W or locations. Um, and to maybe either begin schematic design, I think that's where we are with D P W or something uh, with fire related to the actual making progress on moving towards building a new fire station south of downtown. And the, sorry, going back one to economic vitality, that third item about downtown parking working group. Um, continuing to develop a plan is very um, not so strong. I'd like to see it implementing the three actions proposed by the downtown working group in the administrative leadership and personnel goals. Um, again, with the road and sidewalk repairs that developing and implementing decision-making. I, first of all, does it belong in long-term vision instead of administration, leadership, and personnel goals, but also how do we make that a stronger statement? And then should we move the strategic partnership agreement that was in um, community engagement to the administration, leadership, and personnel section? Um, and then, and I think my last one is in long-term vision. The five-year capital program, improvement program, we did a great job in developing one that made sense. And so I, I wonder if we should be rewording that language to talk about that we already have one. And whether it's keeping it up to date or updating it or doing something with it. I, I just don't know whether we want to look at that wording in the long-term vision. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I was busy writing down and thinking. Uh, Kathy?
So I, I think I have only two um, items, and I don't know where I would put them. So Mandy just took the strategic partnership, and I want to say U Mass and colleges, but say the, the name U Mass in it. I might put them under finance and or economic vitality, maybe finance. So, but I want to make it that um, to, to develop strategic agreements with U Mass and colleges um, to contribute to the town and mitigate the financial impact, so I can send wording on it, but I want it to be linked to financing. And in the current community engagement, we could have the social impact. That's a different issue to me, so that could still be there. So then the second one is on money, also on ARPA funds. Um, this would, this will be unique to this coming year and maybe one year more. And I don't know whether I would put it under, I, I might put it under finance. Um, but disperse ARPA funds and, you know, uh, manage and disperse ARPA funds and re- report on um, their impact or report, report on what happened to them. So this is a new group of new, I'm not wording it well, but I would like it to it to show up, because it's um, we're putting money in to a management position of the ARPA funds and to, to know where they went and how they were used. I'd like a report back listed somewhere, because it's a lot of money. Those are my two.
Alyssa? Mandy, I think you moved the strategic partnership to another place. I don't know where the most logical place for it is, but I wanted the word, the fin- financial to be anchored to that. Thank you. Okay, Alyssa?
Well, I'll follow up on two things. One is on the strategic partnership agreement. It isn't develop, it's execute. We have a many years expired strategic partnership agreement with U Mass. We need to execute one. We have non-existent with Hampshire and Amherst. We need to execute them. We need to stop talking about planning to do something that we have not done for several years in a row predating this town manager. Predating this town manager who's worked for us for five years. So I would like us-
Pause for a moment and note that Steve Schreiber has lost internet connection.
Oh, no.
Um, and can you have the record show that? And um, can Athena, is there anything you can do to help it? Not even seeing it.
I'm just, I'm just checking to see if he can get back in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Alyssa.
I can wait. But go ahead. Okay, so to clarify that, I, I, I understand what Kathy said and what Mandy Jo said, but I just want the language to be clear that it's not, we'll keep talking about it for another year and another year and another year. It's that we will do it, or we will explain why we haven't done it. And then the next part of reflecting back is, I don't know why the G O L would imagine that the full-town council would be interested in creating a two-year set of goals. And I say that not being facetious, but the charter doesn't allow for us to skip an annual evaluation, because it's inconvenient to write goals. So I guess we'd be developing a two-year set of goals, but still magically evaluating him once a year. I'd like us to stop talking about theoretical possibilities and actually follow what we're required to do, which is to evaluate the town manager every year. We can argue for many hours, obviously, about what time of year that should be done. But I am going to say that I don't want us to spend a whole lot more time on a set of goals that we're handing off to the new town council, except for the fact that it kind of ties a bow on what we're doing with our evaluation. And so that's why I think it would be kind of rude of us to actually just dump that, that on them and say, but we didn't write any goals, because they weren't gonna start till January anyway. I think the town manager should be having some goals, like right now, they didn't expire, or you consider them expired, not expired. But one of the things we might consider mentioning to the future town council as we hand this off to them, depending on how many hours worth of meetings we spend on this, we may want to spend a little less, just make sure that we reflect the endpoint of our evaluation, but also point out to them that it may be time, rather than coming up with hypotheticals of two-year sets of goals and not doing the town manager evaluation every year, is that instead, we might give them the practical advice of, maybe they should pick six things they want done and just be done with it, rather than coming up with all these broad, yet specific goals. Because obviously, that will make their evaluation forms a lot easier to fill out.
Darcy?
I think I'm about to say the opposite of what Alyssa just said. That um, I, you know, I would like us to be, I, I, I like a lot of the suggestions that have been said about what should be added. And I feel like it makes sense for us to be more directive and that each of the overarching areas should have more like between four and six sub-goals that are bulleted, so that they are more apparent as to what they actually are and apparent to the public as to what it is that we want the town manager to do. And and so those are tied to the evaluation. That gives us more, more uh, ability to fine-tune the evaluation in the way that people seem to be wanting to do it today. Um, they wanted more of an indication of uh, the subcategories that people agreed on, but we didn't have any way of telling that because of the way we evaluated. So um, I just feel like the um, part of the town council's power is to evaluate the town manager, and um, we can't really do it very effectively unless we do it um, with a little bit more specificity than what we've been doing, in my opinion.
Um, George?
So I guess in a way, I agree with both Alyssa and with Darcy, if that's possible. Um, I think that what G O L has been trying to do, uh, and with this document, um, is to, on one hand, have a set of broad goals and and then within that, identify as specifically as possible by using words like implement and realize or bring about. In other words, specific actions to the degree that is possible. So Paul has a sense of, okay, this is exactly what they want me to do, where that is appropriate. Now, there might be some areas where you just can't be that specific, but we are trying to blend this. So you have a set of, of broader goals, which are briefly described, um, numbered Roman numerals, then within that, specific um, elements that I think many of you used in your evaluation this time to evaluate Paul, and I think he appreciates having things as specific as possible within these broader categories. So I think the question for you, my colleagues, is, are you satisfied with the broad categories, first of all, with the Roman numerals? Is it something you want to take out, or is it something you want to add? Then within those broad, in that, that's a question. And tonight, we could talk about it, or certainly over the night, you can send this. Uh, and we will talk about it again. The second is within those broad categories, um, what are the, as specific as possible. Um, what are the things that you want Paul to do within those categories? And we will try, in our drafting of the second version, based on your comments and input, uh, to craft things as specifically as possible, um, sort of blend the two. Um, rather than just have a, a, a list of 15 things, Paul do this, 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 and this. I, we felt, and I think we felt last time, that these broad goals give the public and us, and hopefully the next council, a sense of the general direction that we'd like the town to be going in. And so I think G O L was very proud of what we've created, and you seemed happy with it a year ago, broadly speaking. So hopefully, that's still the case. But if it's not, we need to hear from you. Um, and we need to hear, for instance, you want to take out all these Roman numerals and replace them with just a list of 15 things. If you're not happy with some of these specific broader goals, let us know. If you have a new one in mind, let us know. Within the specific ones, more specific, the better. So for instance, when Alyssa suggests that what I hear people saying, uh, is that we want Paul to actually implement an agreement in the coming year with U Mass. We want him to implement an agreement with Hampshire, the strategic partnership with Amherst College. And, and so that's what I'm hearing. And so hopefully, that's what will go into this document, and you'll approve it. So tonight, we could talk about this probably for an hour or two. At some point, maybe we'd like to stop. Um, but you should be sending this to me as chair, and uh, I'm taking notes as you speak. But that's sort of the general frame.
Um, George, I'd like to say that I will send you some comments, but I want to say a few things in a public way, so that when they come to you, they're not surprised. First of all, I like the broad goals. I think as much specificity as possible is fine. If anything, I would maybe break out another management goal about higher-ed institutions. So we stop confusing it with regular communications with the general public. And I also want to point out to the council that as much as you may think of these goals as stagnant, we have amended them, I believe, three times. And so in many ways, they are living goals.
It's a living document.
And I would hope that if, whether, whether we go to two-year goals or one-year goals, we continue that process. Because I think it has made this document a much more current and real document. I also want to point out that basically, by starting this on January 2nd or 3rd, or January 1st, and giving it to the new council, they have time to change it. But it also means that technically, on paper, we haven't had goals for the town council, for the town manager for the last six months. In reality, that's not true. He's continued to function on these 11 goals. And that, I think, is, if anything, the biggest argument for having multi-year goals, or at least a multi-year perspective when you set goals. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
If I may add, Lynn, if I may add, if, if with your permission, I think what reality has just shown us is, I don't think we're gonna see any major change to these Roman numeral goals. I may be wrong. I'd be glad to be proven wrong, but um, I think we're not gonna see a major change. It's rather the specifics within them. Um, as Evan and others have pointed out tonight, there are a number of things that need to be brought in here that have happened in the last six months or year, uh, and that's certainly our job. Um, but I think there is a sense in which this is a living document. At the same time, it does provide a kind of broad vision of what this, at least this council of the last three years has sort of shaped. Um, and if people aren't happy with that, that's, we need to hear that. But I think it is both a um, a sense of a, of a, of a two-year document in a sense, just by its reality, though it doesn't mean we won't evaluate Paul every year, we will. Um, and I don't think these goals are really gonna change that much, um, in the broad sense. Sorry.
Dorothy?
Perhaps I'm being whimsical, but um, I think it'd be good to have a two-way conversation. And we're all talking about goals for the town manager again and again, but the town council is nothing without the town manager. And I would like to have the town manager give some feedback to individual counselors, uh, as to their performance at some appropriate time.
I think he wants to keep his job.
Can, can I, can I suggest something that I found very interesting as I was going through all of our comments and my own thoughts and writing the memo? And that is, in many ways, when we evaluate the town manager, we evaluate ourselves. Because we evaluate our total set of accomplishments. Because we evaluate our total set of accomplishments. Whether we've driven the town manager to do it or whatever we've done. But these are the goals of the council, they're the goals that we give the town manager. So it's just a reflection of, that brings these two together in a way that was very apparent to me. Shalini.
Yeah, I like the way they're organized, just a feedback thing of the overall goals, I like the way they're organized. In terms of what I would like to see happen, in terms of goals, is asking for more comprehensive planning, plans like for economic development. It's not enough to just hire an economic development director, but what we want to see happen from that is what, what is the plan or what is a comprehensive plan that's being created? Similarly with, you know, all the other things like community, sorry, with community participation. We can implement different tools, but how do they relate with each other and the processes? And so just overall, I would want to see comprehensive plans for how we are doing these different things. And then related to that is the measurement. Again, like we may implement certain things, but were they effective? So like I mentioned with racial trainings and so forth, we're investing all these resources. But are they being utilized and what was transformation, what was an impact analysis of some sort? So those are two broad things, like, and then in terms of specific, do we, with respect to housing, that's something that come up was that, oh, do we want to focus on workforce and diversity in homeownership? That could be new goals that are added. And then there's a line about exploring possibility for a year round. So do we want to say we're still exploring it? Or do we want to put that as a goal that we want a year-round shelter? That's something that the town council can decide. Because I would want to see a year-round shelter and not just explore possibilities. That's all for now.
Are there any other comments? And I really want to look to George and the other members of GOL and say, do you feel you've had enough feedback to go for the next phase?
I'm certainly going to ask that all of you send me individually, send directly to the GOL chair, any thoughts, suggestions, or ideas you have, because we will then incorporate them into our discussion. I don't think you want to just leave it to GOL on its own, just simply fashion the document. We really need your input. We've gotten a good bit of it tonight, and that may be sufficient. You may have said all that you need to say, but, or you can come to the GOL meeting and, and be happy to join us as we will revise, create a second draft. But I guess what I'm asking for is any written comments you want to send. We meet again on December 1st. And with the goal of having a draft, a second draft for you on December 6th. So I don't know if that'll be the last draft, probably won't be. I hope it won't go through as many drafts as it went through the last time. I forget how many, I think it was like eight or nine at the end. Hopefully we've, we've gotten past that. But, so I guess I'm asking for your input, either in writing or in person. December 1 is when we meet, 10:30 on Zoom.
Shalini.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing is in the management goals about having clear processes for participation that encourage asking questions and sharing views, but not allowing for personal attacks. That's for staff, that's for town councilors, that's for everyone. And we need to have really clear policies and processes for that.
Okay. Then, given that, we're going to move on. Let me just fish my agenda. We're going to go on to action item D, reconsideration of the November 8th, 2021 town council vote to refer proposed zoning Article 6 temporary moratorium on the permitting and approval of the large-scale ground mount solar photovoltaics installations. So let me just recap where I believe we are, and I'm very open to corrections. This item is a motion to reconsider referral. The motion to reconsider was made by Andy Steinberg and seconded by Mandy Johanneke under rules and procedures 7.5A. At the time of the first vote, Andy voted in favor of the majority of the town council to refer the solar bylaw moratorium to the planning board and the community resources committee. However, on the 15th, he stated that he did not have all of the information needed at that time. Given that the legal opinion provided by the town's attorney was not available and was only placed in the packet at the end of the 15, the end of the day on the 15th. Right after the motion to reconsider was made and seconded, Mandy Johanneke made the following motion to postpone discussions to November 22nd as the last action item. It was seconded by George. Although this was questioned at the time, as president, I decided we should proceed with the vote. That vote was 11 to 1 to 0 to 1. I stand by that decision. I also want to point out that the legal opinion from our town attorney was placed in your packet on the 15th, but it's also in your packet tonight. We have received this opinion along with other unsolicited opinions and emails. In the past, it has been the practice of the town council to honor the opinion of our town attorney. Since they will have to defend us in the court should that situation arise. So with that, I'm going to call on Andy Steinberg, who called for the reconsideration, and see if he has any comments.
I'll be very brief now, then come back if there's further discussion warrants it. But I feel that this was and still is a major issue that needs to be considered at some point within the process by our town council and by committees and by the council itself when it find, because if it comes back to a final vote, it is a zoning bylaw in of its and requires a two-thirds vote of this council at the time of final passage. I don't know if that's going to happen with this council or the next council, if this is going to end up being a carry item. I think the second thing I would note is, is that we have received several opinions, one from town council. And I think that Lynn has appropriately pointed out that we get multiple opinion of things that we hire our own attorney for this and that, but the town manager has done the very extensive other statement that we received over the weekend. You know, it might be helpful to know that our attorney has looked at it and see if the attorney has any further comments based on it. I think that that's a decision of the group, whether that would be helpful to have. I, in my final point is, is that if we decide to go ahead with the referral as previously voted two meetings ago, this issue isn't going to be disappearing because it still will be alive for consideration by the planning board, by CRC, and ultimately by GOL before it comes back to council so that whether, whatever we do tonight, this issue isn't going to disappear. So I think that that'll turn it back to the president.
Okay, Mandy Jo.
Yeah, I just want to just add some clarification to what a motion to reconsider is, because I know in the past we've had questions about this. So a yes vote on the motion that's on the floor would mean you want to reopen the debate on whether to refer the proposed moratorium to GOL, CRC, and the planning board for hearings. A no vote on the motion to reconsider, the motion that's on the floor, would mean you do not want to reopen debate on that motion to refer. And so if the yeses pass, that means the referral motion is back on the floor for another vote on whether to refer it to those various committees. If the motion to reconsider does not pass, the prior vote stands. And the motions, the moratorium remains referred to those committees.
Thank you. Kathy.
That was actually helpful. Are we, so we are, we're not discussing the merits right now? We're discussing whether we want to reconsider or not.
That is correct.
So do we want to keep with our earlier vote? Okay.
That is correct. We want it, the motion, the first to vote, the only vote right now on the floor is whether we want to reconsider our vote. And we have to vote yes if we want to reconsider or no if we do not. We are not here to discuss the merits.
Okay, and, and my understanding from what Andy just said, since he's the one who brought that motion, I think, is around the legal opinion. And I read the legal opinion that we got is quite clear. And I've been told in the past that I can't question, I was not allowed to question on a vote on an earlier zoning. So I know when this ultimately comes back to us, if we keep it going out, we're going to need a super majority to even put it on the books. So, okay, so we're just voting on whether we want to reopen this or not.
Okay, whether we want to reopen the question as to whether or not we want to refer.
Okay.
Okay. George.
So excuse me, just my screen just did something strange. What our attorney says is that this is defensible in court. Right? Which means it almost certainly will go to court and will cost us a fair amount of money. We may want to do that. But it seems to me that, and again, if I'm straying into territory other than the motion, somebody just tell me to shut up. But I, I guess I'm trying to argue for why we should reconsider. Since I voted in the minority, I couldn't bring this motion. As I understand it, it could only be brought by someone who voted in the majority, which was Andy. And I'm assuming people are looking for reasons why we should reconsider. And the attorney's decision says that this is something that they believe that the town council can do. But it's also something that will, will be certainly challenged in court. And hence will cost the town substantial amount of money to defend. So we have a ZBA, we have a conservation commission. And we have colleagues who are working very hard to actually create a zoning bylaw. So my feeling is that I would vote to reconsider. Yes. In spite of what the attorney has told us. If that makes any sense.
Evan.
I have a question, maybe Mandy knows the answer to it. I think I know the answer to this, but I figure I'll ask it anyway. So if we, so when we voted last, when we did this, that started a clock. And that clock meant that CRC and planning board had to hold the public hearing by January 11th. I believe that Mandy, as current chair of CRC, is planning on holding that hearing on January 10th. I guess I'm wondering if the motion to reconsider passes and then we have to re-vote the original motion, does that restart the clock? Or does, or because we're just affirming a previous vote, do, does the same timeline still apply? So I guess my question partly is based on if we vote to reconsider and then it passes again, does that buy us a little bit more time to do the hearing or does it, does the timeline stay?
May I, Lynn?
Please.
So I, I do not technically know the answer to that. What I will say is it may, because you'd in theory have a new referral date. And so then the 65-day timeline might start again. I will, I will say that as current chair, I have tentatively set a hearing date for CRC of January 10th, 2021 on this matter, at 7:00 PM, which is a Monday evening. That was set in consultation with the council president on hopes of being able to appoint a committee between the 3rd and the 10th and have a quorum on the 10th, which is a Monday night. The planning board has already advertised their intended hearing, which is set for hearing on December 1st. At, I'm not sure what time they normally meet, starting at 6:30 on a Wednesday night. I don't know the exact time of the hearing. It's December. No, I know it's December 1st. I don't know whether they set 6:35 or 6:45 or something, but, um, um. So while it might technically sort of advance the 65-day clock, I guess it would be two weeks. I'm not sure there's any intention by either committee to change those carrying dates. If the motion to refer, if the reconsideration passes and then the motion refer passes again, it, it might set the clock, but I'm not sure there's any intention to reconsider those hearing dates.
Darcy.
Yeah, I, I guess to George's concern about that we might have to defend something in court. I think that regardless of whether we refer it, refer the bylaw to the planning board or not. I think there's some high likelihood that if we don't refer it, that there'll be a resident petition that will be automatically referred. So I don't think, I think one way or the other, it's probably going to be referred. So I'm just, just saying that one way or the other, it's probably going to get referred.
Are there any other comments before we vote? Shalini.
Yeah, I, I just feel that, I mean, I, we all agree that there are urgent climate action goals. And that my concern is by going through this process, we're just delaying any actions that we could be taking right away. So for example, my understanding is that we all, at least that's my sense, that is a council, we're in agreement that we need a solar bylaw to guide how we move forward. And we are pushing that work forward when that could be starting right away. And so that's my concern. And the other concern is, as we've heard from several scientists, I've spoken to so many different people, including urban planner who works in sustainability and so forth. There isn't enough, there aren't enough rooftops. We can, you know.
Shalini, I'm going to interrupt that, that's.
Yeah, we're not, I know, and I know, so.
Staying on the issue to reconsider. We're not staying on the merits of the bylaw.
Right, right, I know, but that feeds into whether we are going ahead this route or that route. So I won't go into too many details, but my main point is that maybe we need to decouple the issue and, and maybe we need to, and my concern is we're not taking actions we should be by prolonging this issue, so.
Andy.
Yeah, I guess I just maybe to clarify it. If we vote reconsider, it enables us to have this discussion about what Chapter 48, Section 3 means, what, and some of the issues that others have referred to. We could then, if we, if that discussion have the re-vote tonight. If, on the other hand, we feel that we have enough information and that there's no, no reason to consider it further, then reconsideration should just be defeated and let the motion stand as it is. So I think it's, the question is whether there's a majority of the council that would like to have the discussion that Shalini has had, but I think that we should frame our thinking in that terms and just go forward with the vote. uh, that Shallany has had, but I think that we should frame our thinking in that terms and just go forward with the vote.
Agree. Um. I'm just take, I want to take a second and just read the motion that we have. Okay, so the motion to reconsider is as follows. In a court, it's in accordance with Council Rules of Procedure 7.5, to reconsider the council's November 8th, 2021, vote to refer zoning bylaw article 16, temporary moratorium on the permitting and approval of large-scale ground-mounted salt, solar photovoltaic installations sponsored by counselors DeAngelis and Griesmer. Motion was made by Andy Steinberg and seconded by uh, Mandy Johanneke. Is there a second to the motion to reconsider?
It's already been seconded.
Thank you. So we move to vote, the, this, the motion on the floor is as I just read. If you vote yes, you mean, it means you want it to reconsider. If you vote no, you want it to stand as it is with a referral. Okay? And the town clerk to the town council has placed the motion on the screen. Is there any other questions about your vote? And what the vote means? Seeing none, then I'm going to start with Dorothy Pam. No. Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane. No. Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Uh, excuse me, hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
No.
Shallany Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
Darcy Dumont.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is a no. Mandy Johanneke.
Yes.
The motion passes and we will now move to reconsideration. So the motion on the floor now, if we were going to do it tonight, is to um, refer zoning bylaw article 16, temporary moratorium on the permitting and approval of large-scale ground mount, mounted solar photovoltaic installations sponsored by counselors DeAngelis and, and Griesmer to the planning board and the community resources committee for hearings held no later than January 12th, 2022, and for a written recommendation and explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan from the planning board to the town council and to the community resources committee no later than 21 days after the planning board hearing. Um, and for the ca, community resources committee to send a written recommendation to the town council and to submit all materials to the governance organization and legislation committee for review of clarity, consistency, and actionability within 60 days of hearing, of the hearing held by the community resources committee. Is there a second?
It's already on the floor.
Thank you. So. Comments? Mandy Jo.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I supported the reconsideration. Uh, as, as many know, I voted against the motion to refer the first time, um, but I think not many people, if any, on the council knew of the chapter 40A, section 3 prohibition on bylaws that um, prohibit uh, installation of solar mechanisms. And yes, we have a town attorney opinion and, and I, I stand by what um, councillor Griesmer said at the beginning about how we have to trust that in terms of defense. I have a lot of questions about that, that if this gets referred, I will definitely be asking if I continue to be on GOL and if not, um, when it comes back to the council. Um, but I think we need to consider here whether we want to take the risk of the litigation, whether that's um, an appropriate risk to take. I also think we need to consider, and this is where I'm hoping the sponsors, um, who brought this to the council two weeks ago, um, will respond, which is where, what is the status of the current drafting of a solar siting bylaw? And when that, might that come to the council for referral? Because that can make all the difference in the world as to whether we want to take the risk of litigation, whether we want to take the risk that we have to spend town money on litigation on a moratorium. If the solar siting bylaw, for example, is going to be on a council agenda next week for referral, right? Um, all of that goes into the consideration as to whether we should take the risk now to refer a bylaw that um, may or may not be legally allowable under MGL. Although I do say our town attorney has said it is definitely a defensible allowability to create that moratorium. Um, and so I, I'm to the point where I'm not willing to take that risk, especially since I believe the solar siting bylaw will be here soon um, for those hearings. And as we've been told in the past with other bylaws, that once they are noticed, they are um, need to be followed in any permitting um, as they were proposed until a council votes. Um, so that's, that's my position.
Um, I'm going to, um, as one of the sponsors, make a statement and then I want Pat DeAngelis to also be allowed to do that as one of the sponsors. Um, we have met on two different occasions with planning staff. They are the people who recommended that we put in this bylaw 18 months. And they did that based on the experience that this council has had with getting bylaws developed and through the council. Not in terms of once they're referred, but just developed. They would like the opportunity to have a discussion with the planning board. They would like an opportunity to have a discussion among themselves and with counselors before they even bring a bylaw to us. And what they don't want to do is bring a bylaw that is going to end up needing tons and tons and tons of rewriting. Having said that, I also know that Pat has been spending enormous amounts of time working on elements of that bylaw. And as recently as this past week, that bylaw, we had another meeting, it was our second. And we passed that bylaw on to the town planning staff, who it is now in their hands to put it in a format where it can even go under discussion. But I do want to go back to the original recommendation and we pushed. We said, can we do this in 12 months? And Rob Mora consistently said 18. So. That's, I, I need to share that point with you all. And the only reason that Pat and I came forward with the moratorium was because of the length of time it takes to develop a good bylaw. Pat, please go ahead and comment and then we'll go to the rest of the questions.
Yeah, thank you and thanks for what you uh, shared. Um, a zoning bylaw permits the council to set local standards for the subdivision and use of land. And it helps manage the delivery of services and resources. In this instance, a temporary zoning bylaw um, allows us time to really look at and develop a bylaw with parameters that fit Amherst, that don't fit Chutesbury or Pelham or Belcher Town, although they will have elements of that, but really fit Amherst. Um, and um, a moratorium is, will provide us that planning time and it will not prohibit ultimately the development of uh, ground solar, except during the timeframe of the moratorium. There seems to be a real misconception that Lynn and I are out to end um, in-ground solar installations, and that's not accurate. Um, the moratorium in terms of legal issues, uh, our lawyer has said, and it, it has been reflected in other towns that as long as there's a timeframe, as long as this is a temporary moratorium, uh, we can do that. And the following towns have already done moratoriums on the same issue. Um, Spencer, Warren, Oxford, West Brookfield, Athol, Wendell, Hamden, Blandford, Oakham, Ware, and Grampy. So we're in the company of other towns who are simply trying to forget the time to do what we need to do. Uh, a bylaw is going to help us protect land. It's going to help us protect our community and the safety of our community. I mean, we're, we're really trying to, to care for the health and safety of the community. And we don't want the kind of issues that have happened in Orange and Ware and West Brookfield and Williamsburg and other places where there's been serious erosion, well spoilage, river spoilage. Uh, we want to be able to get guidelines that make whatever solar installation that is put in, in Amherst, one that is productive and it helps us address some of the climate issues, but is a safe and and is a simply a safe installation that everyone can benefit from. Um. We've worked, uh, you know, there, I can answer, I'll leave, maybe I'll leave it there for now. Uh, the biggest issue, when you're looking at timeframe uh, at a temporary moratorium, is that sense of having a limited time and that's what we're asking for. And if you read the temporary by, um, moratorium bylaw that was presented, it talks about um, 18 months about, I believe it says that, or a little, almost, almost two years, but uh, it also says or until a bylaw is in place. So if that happens sooner, that's fine, the moratorium is over. Uh, and so I'll stop there and, and open, I'd like to hear other comments, but Lynn and I are open for questions.
Kathy.
I'm, I'm just going to underscore what Pat just said and I have the legal opinion um, written in front of me. Um, he explicitly references, as Pat noted, the towns that have been putting in temporary moratoriums. And he underscored the word temporary as being upheld by the attorney general in multiple towns. This, this is not just, they went on the books and people ignored it. They went on the books and someone went after it and the attorney general said, these are fine. Um, we didn't ask for a, a, examine the risks of some of the other decisions we've had. I think this, the notion of buying time and if we can move quickly to get a great bylaw that sails through here, through here, meaning the town of Amherst, I think that would be everyone's preference and the moratorium would end. So this isn't stopping that. The wording is large installations. Um, once they go in, uh, they don't go out again. Um, and the technology is changing. And I, I did, Shallany often talks, or some people often talks about the researchers who are sending us letters. I've looked at a couple of these, a few of them aren't scientists. They are writing for a, a, an opinion piece and you go into their backgrounds and they um, are not necessarily of the kind of background with what's the new technologies coming on from solar? What can we do with forests, preserving parts of the forest for composition? So I think it's, you've got to be careful on um, pulling down different kinds of documents because there's good solid evidence that we need to balance here, including um, when, when the climate action people worldwide have now been looking at this. So I think the temporary moratorium made sense to me and it still makes sense to me to buy us the time to put the bylaw on the books. And I absolutely hope that we move as quickly as we can to get, as Pat said, a bylaw that fits the town of Amherst. So we can pull pieces from other bylaws, but really say, this is one we can endorse the people who want it, so we don't tear ourselves apart by changing words and sentences that they can move quickly. And in the past, it's mainly been disagreement about subsets of some of these bylaws if there wasn't a substantive disagreement. If we all agree, if we all agree, we want the solar, control of solar when it goes in and we want it on the books. If we get a good bylaw, I think it'll move quickly. We just need to get to one that we can get the yes on. So I am strongly in favor of this because we can't go backwards. Um, and that's why we need the moratorium. We're late already. We should, probably should have done it a few years ago, but everyone knows, we have certainly been busy on zoning. This just didn't ra, raise its head to the level of getting on our agenda, unfortunately.
We don't have the clock up, but I've asked that it be put up. George?
Just a question for the two sponsors. Um. Why do you feel, or do you feel that the ZBA and the conservation commission are not up to the task? I take it any project that uh, will be, and I assume this is being driven by a particular project that everyone's aware of. But uh, aside from that, um, if a project comes forward, it has to, I believe, go before both the ZBA and the conservation commission. So if you could help me understand why you think somehow they would not be able to address uh, the issues of public health and safety and, and welfare.
Mr. Bachman, would you please speak to one of those issues? Not whether they're up to the task, but the relationship of this petition, this permitting with the conservation commission.
Sorry. Yeah, so the conservation commission is constrained to just the wetlands and that's the only thing that they can address. They can't talk about the overall value of the project. They could, they can't speak to, um, whether it's placed properly. They could just talk about the impact on the wetlands and that's what's, was, within their, the conservation commission's jurisdiction.
I, I have the deepest respect for the conservation commission. Having attended their meetings, we should be so lucky to have experts that will be willing to give the public service that they give. Uh, and they are just an amazing group of people and the person that staffs them is equally amazing. So, um, I have no doubt about their ability or the.
Is there a role for the ZBA? Maybe I'm mistaken. There is no role for the ZBA here.
I don't.
Uh, uh, my understanding is there is, but I could be mistaken and maybe Steve would know the answer to that. I, I don't have enough experience, but um, uh, so basically, um, there are no constraints.
If there is, I have every confidence in the ZBA, but I, I understood it to be planning board and um,
A planning.
Conservation commission.
All right, thank you.
Steve.
Yeah, so uh, I think that councillor Ryan asked, an excellent question because when councillor DeAngelis was reading what her concerns are, what I was hearing is that's the role of the planning board to do exactly what councillor DeAngelis was describing. We've worked together for three years. This is the end of our third year. We went through a whole, we went through retreats, we've gone through, um, of course, we've gone through a pandemic and a whole bunch of other things, but we've got through a zoning priority list and we took votes on the zoning priority list. This was not on that list. And I don't see the nuclear option here, that a moratorium to me is the nuclear option. That's why I was very much against the, the building moratorium. That also wasn't on the zoning list, the times that we've discussed it. In fact, we've never discussed any moratorium on anything when we were doing our zoning processes. I don't believe that this is the scale that the nuclear option should be used. In fact, I feel the other way around that, um, I believe it was Alicia Campbell that said, the clock is ticking, but not the clock of what was being described here, the clock is ticking of our need to step up and figure out a way of taking part in producing clean energy. So clean energy is no longer something that needs, that should be produced in somebody else. is no longer something that needs, that should be produced in somebody else's backyard or somebody else's woods. It's time for Amherst to step up and I won't be around for the vote, you know, depending on how this vote goes, but I won't be around for a vote on a moratorium if that moves ahead, but I think, I think it's a mistake.
Evan?
So I voted against this last time for reasons that I explained. At the time, that largely had to do with the fact that I think that we can move forward with a solar siting zoning bylaw and I think that we can do it with or without the moratorium and I'd rather see our planning staff and planning board and CRC spending time on all of the other zoning things that we should be doing as we develop this siting bylaw and not on the moratorium. So I will repeat the comments that I made last time. My main comment is actually to Mandy, which is that if this does get referred and it does restart the clock. I feel like it would take pressure off of the council to have to immediately appoint a new CRC and have them get their act together and have their first meeting essentially be a public hearing. And so my hope is that if it does pass that that public hearing can be pushed back, whether I'll be on CRC or not, we'll find out. But yeah, I'll leave it at that.
You have your hand up, Paul.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to mention also that the I've been informed that AMP Energy had withdrawn its applications to the Conservation Commission and to the zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure what the reason is that we've just been advised they withdrawn their applications.
Mandy Jo?
I wanted to clarify some statements that Counselor Shane made regarding a Attorney General review. So all of the towns that were mentioned regarding having adopted moratoriums, at least at that point, were towns. The Attorney General only reviews bylaws passed by town meetings in towns, not cities. And the Attorney General reviews them automatically, not because someone has a complaint about them, not because there was some sort of legal action or anything. Under state law, if a town passes a bylaw or a bylaw amendment, the Attorney General must review it before it can go into effect. Whether or not anyone's complained about the potential legality of it. The Attorney General's review is very prescriptive and very strict. And they say that in most of their reviews that they can only not approve something under very specific instances. And so just because they've been approved by an Attorney General gives us some indication that maybe they might be illegal, but maybe they might be legal, but it doesn't hold weight in necessarily a court of law because the Attorney General is reviewing only for very specific reasons. And I just wanted to make that clear that just because there have been a number of moratorium approved by Attorney Generals are allowed to go into effect by the Attorney General's office, doesn't mean that they're actually legal. And, and so I just wanted to make that clear.
And it doesn't mean that they're illegal. Thank you, Mandy. One of the things, the other reason for calling for a moratorium is actions that are happening at the state level to address Chapter forty, Section three. Because it is ambiguous. And so Representatives Olivera Blas, Blase, I'm not saying her name correctly, and currently Mindy Dom, who has decided to sign on as well as our Senate Representative Joe Cumberford are working to change the statute language so that it clarifies that towns and cities can reasonably regulate commercial and industrial solar. A pertinent change will be that commercial governmental and non-residential solar energy structures and systems may be reasonably regulated for the purposes of protecting public health, safety and welfare, preserving forested lands, active agriculture or wetlands, or to ensure compatibility with municipal zoning. So again, we have this reference to municipal zoning. We have the right to make decisions around design, decommissioning, financing, et cetera, et cetera. And these are important decisions that we need to make. The ZBA will be guided by zoning bylaw. Otherwise, it will work with a zoning bylaw that does not affect ground, in-ground solar installations and that's, that's not a good idea. The other thing is that working on this bylaw, we've been following guidance from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Solar Best Practices. We've been looking at the Department of Energy Resources in Massachusetts for guidelines. And, and I realize this is speaking to the potential bylaw. But for me, it's also speaking about why we need the time to hold things in advance temporarily. But what the policy guidance for regulating solar energy systems from the Department of Energy Resources says is, this guidance along with the companion model zoning for the regulation of solar energy systems was prepared by the Massachusetts DOE R to assist cities and towns throughout Massachusetts in establishing reasonable standards to facilitate development of small, medium and large-scale ground-mounted and roof-mounted solar systems. So here we have a state body saying that it is important that we create reasonable standards. I've already talked to the people who got me started. Pardon me, I'm sorry. I can speak again later.
Alyssa?
So apparently we're at the point in the meeting where I'm just planning to offend everyone. So buckle up. Obviously, we have a huge difference of opinion on the value of eighteen months. It sounds like a really short period of time to some people. It sounds like a really long period of time to some people. I guess it's kind of like waiting for a holiday. It depends on if you're expecting a really nice gift at the end of it. So we may not be able to come to any shared understanding around whether or not eighteen months is meaningful. So in the meantime, I want to point out a couple of process things as I want to do. I'm hearing about how two town councillors spent a significant amount of staff time on how to develop a bylaw and a moratorium, so really two bylaws on something this town council has not identified as a priority. Rather than on things this town council has spent time identifying as our priorities, long list of those things. Is it because we like these town councillors more than we like other town councillors? I don't understand why those town councillors felt empowered to do that. I agree with the theory that moratoriums are bad policy. Past moratoriums in Amherst have resulted in artificially inflating the price of single-family homes. I realize this one's not intended to do that, but that's what that one did, even though that allegedly wasn't the intent. Eighteen months is bad policy. I don't disagree that we need a solar siting bylaw. But I am disappointed that we have to go through the motions of hearings, staff time, appointed committee member time and the public on a moratorium instead of doing the real work on the solar siting bylaw. And truly, I didn't really see us putting a priority on developing the bylaw and that's why I think practically speaking, that's why people are pursuing the moratorium. Because when we sat down and said, these are our priorities as the town council, we look to the staff, the professional staff, we are regularly told knows better, knows best about priorities and good practice. They've never brought this concern to our attention, even though it's been happening in Sheepsberry and other nearby communities. So what is it that they're going to devote to not only getting the moratorium through the hoops that it has to go through, but then the solar bylaw through the hoops that it has to go through? So what else that we've already identified as a priority? Are they not going to be working on while they're doing this? So given this and given that at the same time, we are told their models, although of course we'll have to tweak them to make them work for Amherst. I don't know why we need eighteen months of uncertainty. Uncertainty that's uncertainty for both the abutting neighbors and for the property owners. If a solar siting bylaw is important, which I think I agree it is, then we should be work, we should have said that at town council, we should have developed it at town council. We should be moving it through and we should stop wasting time on putting Band-Aids on things because we didn't think things through.
I want to be very clear that as is expected with any town councillor, I first went to the town manager and asked whether it was okay to speak to the planning department. I have not violated any rule. Darcy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that creating a solar siting bylaw is one of the actions proposed in the Climate Action Adaptation and Resilience Plan. And I wanted to thank the sponsors for sharing all the information about the different municipalities, which I wasn't I didn't know about other communities that have passed solar moratorium bylaws and about and I was interested to see the information about best practices studied by the Pioneer Valley Planning Council Commission and I just feel like the process of municipalities pausing solar development in order to create solar bylaws just makes a lot of sense and it has become really clear that reasonable people, even reasonable climate activists can disagree on solar siting policy. So I personally feel like it's really important to have that discussion as a community to figure out, you know, what our values should be, what we should embed in our solar bylaw. So I do strongly urge us to support the referral of the bylaw.
The town manager has his hand up.
Just want to respond in terms of why staff were involved early on in this process. One of our experiences from last year, we learned lessons as we are a new council. And one of the lessons was staff felt if they had gotten involved earlier in some of the crafting of the language, they would have benefited, the legislation would have benefited earlier than later. So when councillors come to me and say, we are considering a bylaw that we'd like to develop, one of our lessons has been that we want to engage the staff in development of these bylaws because it makes it a better product when it comes to you as opposed to councillors, you know, we get criticized both ways now. Instead of councillors coming to you with something that's ill-formed and then you say, why didn't staff weigh in? We're trying to do it and fix it and do it. So you have something of substance that you can really sink your teeth into prior to your viable time being taken into consideration.
Darcy? I'm sorry, I say it's Dorothy.
I think that the town council has to be flexible. The fact that we didn't foresee the need to do something doesn't mean we can't act upon it when we realize, oh, we should do that. So I have no problem with the fact that it wasn't in some list of goals. So I think we have to be aware that our job is to be aware, to be, keep up to date and to respond to needs as they come, as we have done in this whole COVID experience. And so I definitely support the moratorium because all the indications seem this is going to be a short process. We will be joining a group of other towns that have had the foresight to come up with some reasonable bylaws. We all know that we must have solar in many, many different places. Well, maybe we don't all know, but I certainly am very open to solar in many different places, but we just want to have some practical, useful bylaw to help us avoid future problems. So I support it.
Indy?
Yeah, I was apologized that I lost my connection. So I was out of the meeting, missed some of the debate that's taking place. So if I repeat things that are said, it's not because I didn't hear you, it's because I didn't hear you. You know, I do think that we get back, you know, I get back to ultimately in part to the question of litigation because that's what's been potential that started it. And I don't know what the answer is going to be because it's out in our control as to whether there's going to be litigation in the question of the outcome. Like that it's, we don't know what the outcome is going to be. We have the opinion of our attorney, we have the opinion of another attorney, both of you seem very firm in their opinions and of course, that's what litigation is all about. And I think you can't go into this if you with any assumption if we vote yes that there is going to be no litigation and we can't make an assumption that there's what the outcome of that litigation is going to be. So I'm sort of then back to the policy questions. I guess that I am bothered by the amount of time that it's taking. It seems that the time that's asked is awfully long that it seems to me that we could get litigate, we could get, excuse me, we could get a bylaw started much sooner and that that's what the process is about. When you go through the planning board is you find in through CRC, you find where it is strong and where it might need some changes because you have a hearing process and you hear from our attorney and how to structure it. And that's how I would really prefer to spend our attorney time is on structuring the bylaw appropriately, not over some litigation as to whether a moratorium is right or not. So I looking forward to listening to the rest of the comments and then I'm going to have to figure out where I'm at the end of that discussion.
Alyssa, you still have your hand up and then I'll go to Shalini. Okay, Shalini.
Yeah, I just wanted to share some information that I've been gathering and at this point, other than the fact that we need a solar bylaw, I am not clear where I stand on this issue. So, but I do want to share some of the information that I've been gathering. So one of the things that I heard from the Conservation Commission is that they look at twenty, they have a twenty-five, a list of twenty-five conditions that they'll look at. For any solar project, they have to follow the Mass Department of Environmental Protection requirements. Is it true that, this is a question, that the Conservation Commission can hire their own environmental consultant to look at the impact on water, wetlands and, you know, soil and things like that? So that was a question I had because I was told that they can hire and they will probably hire. I was told that the current project, this is just specifically to a current project in the pipeline, that there was a hundred and fifty-page report on soil samples and whatnot from a very reputable environmental assessment company called TRC Companies. I've spoken to, as I was mentioning, a regional urban planning professional with the whose focus is on equitable and ecological sustainability. And he mentioned that it's an issue especially with using agricultural land because that's the other one and he's definitely not in fear because of the food shortages. We don't want to use agricultural land for solar, which is also becoming popular. So he thought between agricultural and forests, we definitely don't, it's a hard choice, but we don't want to use agricultural land. I've heard from three other scientists and including peer-reviewed journals, Kathy, not just Popular Science, that we will need to cut down some trees and forests and so it's not, it's not as simplistic as we've heard some comments come in like, oh, we can find places if you want. And if it was that simple, we would do that because we all in this room agree that we don't want to cut down trees. We all agree we need to reach our climate action goals. We all agree that we need a solar bylaw. And the question really is, what is the best way to get to that goal? And I'm still not sure what that looks. And I'm still not sure what that looks like, but I think it would help me to decouple the issue. Like I said, we have current solar projects in the pipeline. And that's, can we separate that out and have them go through the process? That exists right now with the Conservation Commission and the planning board that's looking at it. We need a solar bylaw, which I believe the ECAC Committee is willing to look at. And my understanding is they gave a timeline of, or not they, but at least. What I heard was twelve months from them to come up with a solar bylaw. And then the third thing is, is a moratorium necessary? So those are three different things for me and I would. Be better positioned to vote one way or the other if you could separate out those things. That's all for now.
Are there any other comments?
There was a question there that can we hire a Conservation Commission? Will they be hiring? Because I was, my understanding that they can hire. And they are probably going to hire and their own environmental consultant.
Yes, so Conservation Commission can request that there be a consultant hired to support the research that they need to do. But there is no application pending right now.
Paul, can you clarify that there's no application pending?
Yes, so I've been told that the application for the Conservation Commission and the ZBA by AMP Energy has been withdrawn, have been withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments? Then. The. The motion that is now on the table. It's been made and seconded. And it's to refer bylaw. Article sixteen temporary moratorium on the permitting. An approval of large-scale ground mo- mounted solar photovoltaics. Installations sponsored by counselors Aunt DeAngelis and Griesmer to the Planning Board and the Community Resources Committee. For hearings or hearing held no later than January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And for a written recommendation and explanation as to whether the proposed bylaw is not inconsistent with the master plan. For the Planning Board to the Town Council and to the Community Resources Committee. No later than twenty-one days after the Planning Board hearing. And for the Community Resources Committee to send a written recommendation to the Town Council. And to submit all materials to the Governance Organization Legislation Committee for review of clarity, consistency. And actionability within sixty days of the hearing held by the Community Resources Committee. Seeing no other comments, I am going to. Begin the process of the vote. Evan Ross.
Aye.
The ayes for referral.
I don't know why.
Yep. George Ryan?
No.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Balneum?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
No.
Patty Angelus?
Aye.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanke?
No.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Would the town clerk please? Announce the vote.
Nine in favor, four against.
So the motion is referred and the only thing that I think still needs clarification. And we won't be clarifying it tonight. And that is whether this extends the deadline.
The, the motion itself says January twelfth.
Yes, it does. So I think we need to continue to assume that that's the basis.
Thank you, everyone.
We now move to the appointments and they were all. Approved, the town managers were, appointments were in the consent agenda. So now we're going to move to the Budget Coordinating Group. And the reason I put this before you is that. George Ryan and Kathy Shane have been serving on this group, which by the way, has never met. And. Because the finance, financial indicators meeting.
By kind of committee.
There you go, George. It's the Financial Indicators Meeting is actually labeled as Budget Coordinating Group. However, during this past Financial Indicators Meeting, the, some of the school committee people suggested that they would like. To have a Budget Coordinating Group meeting. And in preparation for that, should that occur between now and the beginning of the next council. I brought this forward because George has said that he feels it would probably be best if somebody else would serve at this point. So I went out to the council, there's a memo in your packet, which couldn't go in till today because I gave people till. The middle of today, I think it was noon, to express their opinion. Three counselors have expressed their opinion and the way that the. Budget Coordinating Group is set up is that it can have no more than two finance committee members and it can have a third member. So the three people who've expressed their opinion and interest are. Counselor DeAngelis, Counselor Griesmer and Counselor Hanke. Is there anybody else interested in this committee? Mandy Jo?
I thought the memo said Lynn Griesmer, number one, but maybe I read the memo wrong. That, that could be totally me, I read it very quickly. But I wanted to state that the Budget Coordinating Group under the charge doesn't have a maximum of three people. And, and so I wanted to correct your statement that only if there are three or less people. Can there be a maximum of two finance committee members on it, the way it is written? If there are more than three people from the council appointed to the BCG. Then more than two can be from finance. That's the way it's written in the charge.
Thank you. And I, we did, I think we put the charge in the agenda, the packet for tonight. And the memo in fact has three names on it. I'm sorry, those three names are Kathy Shane. Mandy Jo Hanke and Lynn Griesmer. Mandy Jo, did you have anything else you wanted to say at this time? But you read this as saying we can have three people.
We could have more than three people.
Okay, is there anybody else?
The way it says.
Okay, is there anybody else interested in having their name come forward before the council? Athena, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I just have a question. I, in my records, I have that Kathy and George are members through January third, two thousand twenty-two. Did you say that?
I received an email from George saying that he feels it would be best to have someone. That will be continuing to serve in that capacity. So actually Kathy doesn't have to put her name forward again.
Right, and George needs to file a resignation letter with the town clerk's office or you could forward that email to the town clerk department. Please, and thank you. And then Kathy, we wouldn't need to vote on Kathy to be joined.
So we can have up to, we can have more people. Is there anybody else interested in serving on this committee between now and? January third, should it meet? I mean, this is really an iffy question all the way around. Okay, so seeing none, then yes, Alyssa?
I keep waiting for you to ask for discussion rather than names because I'm certainly not putting my name forward. So please let me know when you're ready for discussion.
Would you have to, would you like to make a comment? Yes.
I would very much like to make a comment, perhaps following on the lightness in your tone there at the end of that. When we say BCG is this way, it's true, we have a charge that says it is this way. But as you also indicated, BCG is a mythical animal at this point. It is just something we've assigned people to. Now they have to resign from something they've never actually done. I mean, it's, it's kind of a bit. Kind of a little tiny but silly mess. And the reality remains associated with, you know, I had this argument when we wrote the charge. I obviously lost it then, but I'm going to point it out again now. Is I think that it's ludicrous that given that there are thirteen of us. That we think it's appropriate for us to send more than two. When if there's a BCG meeting that has anything to do with reality BCG. Which is the BCG that existed before town council. I know, so hard to imagine there were things before town council. There was an actual BCG that actually had two representatives from each body on it. The idea that we'd send three or four, however many people we want to send, while the school committee can want to send however many they want. That doesn't make for parity and it doesn't make for a good conversation. So I leave you all to sort it out, but the reason it's goofy is because we made it goofy. Not because the original concept of BCG ever envisioned a thirteen-member town council versus a five-member school committee. Or a six-member library trustees. So good luck in figuring that out in the future so that the school committee doesn't feel overwhelmed by the number of town counselors that are there.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Andy?
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Alyssa on this one. I had my hand up for a moment and then pulled it down when you were asking for self-nominations. And that was actually the reason that I pulled my hand down. It is a body that, in having served on BCG since its inception. Through the end of the select board time, either as a finance committee member or a select board member. It's a body that worked by consensus. And it was to achieve. And it ultimately doesn't make policy, it recommends policy. And it recommends policy ultimately that will come back. To the council through the finance committee, the council ultimately. Makes the final decision on recommendation of the finance committee. And what the issue that's up here right now is. Whether we very from the longstanding principle that we had adopted many, many years ago. To try and parse out increases by equal percentage. As opposed to something else. And that was done back in the days of town meeting originally. To try and make sure that we had a process that would keep us from having fights at town meeting. On the floor about, oh, I want more money for my particular segment of government. We're now in even a more peculiar stance because council is making the decision that the council has a much more active role. In the municipal end of the budget than the, than the town meeting ever did. So for all of those reasons, I think for the. Treating fairness for the trustees and the school committee. That I have to agree with Alyssa, that it would be best to keep the numbers equal. At this point and because it is a consensus body, not a voting body, it doesn't set policy, recommends policy.
Mandy Jo?
So when you look at the charge, the charge says each body can pick its number of members. Which means we don't actually know how many members the school committee is going to designate. We don't know how many the library is going to designate because they could designate all six if they wanted. Or the school committee could designate four, or five, or three, or two, or even one. Because the charge says they can designate as many as they want. And so sticking to necessarily two, because we just assumed that they will also appoint two. Is, I think, putting the cart before the horse almost because we don't know how many they're going to appoint. And maybe they're waiting for us to see how many we're going to appoint, right? The whole thing's a mess with the charge, but the, the main thing I wanted to say is. BCG may not work the way it worked in the past and I'm starting to realize it, which is why I want to be on BCG. Because the way the charge is written is that it's providing advice to the town manager during the development of the annual budget. As requested by the manager. It's developing coordinated budget guidelines and calendars. That's what the charge says. It hasn't, it says nothing about recommending to the town council coordinated budget guidelines or budget guidelines. The town council's adopting its own. The school committee indicated that, or some of the members of the school committee indicated that there was concern that. What the manager was putting out there may not be what they want. What the finance committee, because I don't know what they talked about and we haven't seen of budget guidelines from the finance committee for us as a council to. To talk about. The finance committee may be recommending different numbers, but what's the BCG going to do? And that's what I'm not sure because they could tell the manager, but then the manager's got BCG saying one thing and the council saying another. Because BCG doesn't report to the council at all, according to BCG. It talks to the manager and coordinates budgeting between the manager and everything. So. One of the things I'm starting to realize is I'm not sure what. BCG can do or who it reports to or what type of even consensus it has. Say BCG reaches a consensus on X split. If that conflicts with what the finance committee recommends to the council and what the council as a whole passes. I don't know what the manager is going to do with that frankly. You know, and so something's going to have to talk. So I, it's a different budgeting world that I'm not sure the Charter Commission could have predicted. Because we'd never been in a city budgeting environment before. And so. I wouldn't artificially limit the BCG to two when we're not exactly sure. How it's going to work at all.
Mandy Jo, thank you for that reflection and. Particularly as it relates to the charter and past history of BCG. I also want to say that I, I can't remember for sure. But I think there was something in our minds that this would be somewhat like a mirror. In terms of membership as JCPC was. And in that case, we have three, the school committee is two, the library has two. I, that may be something so far back three years ago that I don't remember it correctly. Alyssa?
So the BC charge we wrote is not good. That's just a simple fact.
Right.
What the charter says about BCG is not good because the Charter Commission didn't talk to me and Andy about it before they wrote it. And it does say coordinated budget guidelines, which as Mandy Jo pointed out, we don't empower them to do. The charge doesn't empower them to do, but the charter says they do. And we talk a lot about the charter police, but there, and there aren't any. But what the school committee, I believe, wants. Is they want to be able to have the conversation that Andy and I discussed. Not the conversation that the BCG charge that we currently have envisions. So we have to figure out some good way to do that. And the reason, obviously, I'm sorry if it wasn't obvious to everyone else, that the school committee would not send more than two people. Is because then they would be sending a quorum and then when they would have to post a school committee meeting, which was certainly never the intent of BCG. Which, like you said, was very much originally modeled on JCPC. The lack of town meeting in the role obviously makes a big difference. But the endpoint is not making our charge look good or whether we filled out all the slots. The endpoint is enabling the school committee to find a way to talk to town counselors at a posted meeting. But not at full posted meetings of both those bodies about who gets what.
I'd like to pause for a moment and ask the town manager. Since the Financial Indicators Meeting, have you been contacted by anybody to form and call this group together?
No, not explicitly. I think, you know, based on.
No, not explicitly. I think, you know, based on the, at the financial indicators meeting, which is a, it's sort of what we, it's sort of the beginning of BCG, it's where we share information, which is what is required in the charter. But there seemed to be some disagreement, and I think I look at BCG as a, as a communication tool. It's a place where we can pull people from the three elected bodies together to have that conversation. It's not, I don't see it as a decision-making body necessarily, but as a, a place for people to share opinions that then go to inform the, the policies that the, you know, the guidelines the council would, would prepare and that, and the budget that the town manager would prepare. So, but no one has done a formal request.
So perhaps we should delay this item instead of spending any more time on it. Since there has not been a request for an actual meeting, unless the town manager tells me that you plan to call one and you'd like to know who our representatives are.
Well, given the conversation that was held at, uh, recently, I think that we should be prepared to hold a BCG meeting. I think that when there's a little bit of disagreement, it's a good thing to pull people into the room. So I think the council should be prepared to come together uh, probably in December sometime with the rest of other, uh, elected officials.
Okay. Then, Andy?
Yeah, I guess given what I, what the discussion has gone so far, I will ask to have my name added to the list uh, for consideration. And I keep going back and looking at that sentence in uh, Charter section five point two. And uh, you know, it's been sort of paraphrased a bunch, but what it says in its entirety is the role of this group shall be to review the financial conditions of the town, revenue and expenditure forecasts and other relevant information prepared by the town manager in order to develop coordinated budget guidelines and calendar and to coordinate the process of budget development. So I don't know that it actually is getting to the bottom, you know, to the question of how much money each segment should get, but clearly, you know, I think it's a body that wants meeting could do that. But uh, it, it really is, it's a process group and uh, the reason I'm throwing my hand in at the last moment is because in the end, I think this finance, as long as I'm finance committee chair, uh, then the process becomes sort of intertwined with the process that we have to manage as council also.
Okay. George?
I would like us to go ahead tonight and um, settle this if we could, given Paul's comment, just prudent. And um, we have apparently now four possible candidates. I'd like us to, to settle this tonight if we could.
Okay. Uh, Kathy?
Um, if, just to save us time, so we don't have to pick three people out of four, I'd be happy to withdraw my name and then you've got two from finance and Mandy. That's, and it could be, and I, I guess I, according to, I think I have to resign, but I'm, you know, so I'm, I don't want to prolong it with having to choose among the four of us to get down to three.
Okay. George?
I guess I may have missed something because I was like writing my letter of resignation during the conversation. Um, can we have four? Did we settle that? I, maybe I missed it. Can we have four? So let's have four. Sounds great. I mean.
But aren't only, uh, aren't only two of them allowed to be finance committee?
Oh, is that the problem?
No, no, Mandy Jo says no.
He's got it covered.
The charge is once it gets over three, that limit of two is gone.
All right.
Good. Four it is.
Um, you know, uh, everyone's better at technical, but if three of us are on, we're a quorum of the finance committee. Correct?
That's never been settled because of the issue of the non-voting members. That's true.
I'll do whatever will expedite this discussion.
Let, let's move this on.
I tried.
Alyssa, thank you. You did. You did an excellent job, George. Um, so Kathy, are you officially withdrawing your name?
Yeah.
Can I just hear the names again? It's Andy, Kathy. On the memo are Kathy.
And Mandy. All right, never mind.
And Andy has added his name. Three of us are on the finance committee. Only two of us can be there if we count the quorum based on this. Oh my God, I feel like I'm back in the first days.
You know what? I, I'll just withdraw my name because with you and Andy on there, you will know everything that I know. So you, we, it's duplication. I'm out.
Mandy Jo can, who does enormously great analysis, can also uh, bring forth good ideas for how the charter should be revised. Um, is there any further question, George?
Just don't forget to resign, Kathy.
All right, there's a slate. Is there any further question? Then the slate is as follows, um, councillor Hanke, councillor Steinberg, councillor Griesmer. We'll do a roll call vote.
We need to make the motion.
Okay. Yes, we do. Uh, and I think I even have a motion here. Thank you. Okay. To appoint councillors, Steinberg, Hanke, and Griesmer to the Budget Coordinating Group under Town Council Rules and Procedure Rule 10.6. Councillors appointed committees named in the charter effectively immediately for a term to expire January second, two thousand twenty-one.
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there any further question? Alyssa? Please unmute.
You didn't just say twenty twenty-one.
I said, I know I did. I, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, then uh, let's begin with George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shelly Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Matt DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Hi.
Lynn Griesmer's an eye, Mandy Jo, Hanke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
Thank you. Paul, you now know, you now hope, know who to poll. Thank you. Um, we did, uh, we're going on to liaison reports, uh, committee reports, Mandy Jo, CRC.
You're gonna be seeing a lot of reports from us this week, so I don't really have anything else to report.
Except read the reports. Um, thank you. Elementary school building. Anything else, Kathy, since last week?
I'm just unmuting. Um, well, I sent you all a notice that we have picked a designer and I just wanted to let you know that there are two meetings that we're scheduling. One is on December second, which would be our normal eight o'clock in the morning meeting of the building committee, the school building committee, but we're, we're going to set up a December fourteenth joint meeting with the school committee. That's at six thirty in the evening, where Denisco would come and it would be the first of kind of a public forum saying this is the beginning and talking about uh, milestones. This is all contingent on town manager and others negotiating the contract with the designer, but assuming that's done, there are going to be those two meetings coming up.
Kathy, will they be in person or by Zoom?
I'm assuming by Zoom because the school committee is still meeting by Zoom. Paul, you know, I, I don't, we didn't tell this, you know, on the fourteenth, that would be the only question on whether we would have them come in, but um, my.
The, the school committee meets by Google Meet, not by Zoom.
Yeah, they, they meet by Google. I actually had a request whether we could see whether we could meet together by Zoom, just because only one face shows up at a time when they do Google meets for anyone in the audience. They can't see the team, but we can talk about that later. In any case, um, right now, we hadn't talked about an in-person, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. Uh, finance committee, Andy?
Uh, well, you got the report that Kathy sent to the, uh, wrote for the committee, they, to the council. The meeting again is, uh, committee meets again tomorrow and uh, we will be considering a draft of the guidelines and then trying to get them onto the next council meeting, saying with plenty of advanced notice, because it's a fairly meaty document um, in length and uh, we want to make sure that there's plenty of time before it reaches you.
So you're bringing them forth on November twenty-ninth?
It depends on the committee. I know that we had talked about um, a different date, uh, we still had, but um,
It depends how.
Probably could meet that deadline, but I don't know.
Okay. We can decide that after the meeting tomorrow. GOL, George?
I will be sending you all a reminder at some point in the next few days, but if you have anything you wish to contribute to our discussion of the town manager goals, please send them to me and to me only uh, and or uh, come to our meeting on December first. By December first, please send them.
Thank you. Evan, TSO, you've got a full agenda?
Uh, yeah, TSO will have a more thorough report on the things that were uh, done at our most recent meeting on November eighteenth for the council's November twenty-ninth meeting, so I'll save it for then.
Okay, and one of those is in fact uh, regarding the public way on Kendrick Park, right?
Uh, there is a public hearing for the um, North Pleasant Street upgrades along Kendrick Park at the TSO meeting on December second. Uh, what we will have for the November twenty-ninth, our parking regulation, recommended parking regulation changes on Kendrick Place.
Place, thank you. I'm, I knew I'd said the wrong word. Kendrick Place, thank you. Um, are there any um, liaison committee reports? Kathy?
Just a quick one on the, uh, the Community Preservation Act. They, they are getting close to having their final list and they had, they had a lot more proposals than they had money for, but they got good news from Sonya that they have more, more money than they thought they were gonna have. So um, so, and it has a very big section, a big ask for housing on it as well as some pretty interesting other projects. So it was a, a rich set of proposals this year. And just, you know, when people talk about this, it's a lot of money, so it's uh, two point three million dollars. I mean, some of it's been somewhat, some of it's been committed already as debt service from past obligations. So in terms of new spending, it's in the one point eight. Depends, and if more, if they use reserves, it could be over two million. So it's not an insignificant amount of money that, that committee is doing, and they're terrific. They are, they really have thorough discussions. Excellent committee.
Thank you. Um, any other liaison reports? Uh, Alyssa?
So concerned about being brief. I have two brief ones. One is for the African Heritage Reparation Assembly. They had a wonderful team of co-chairs. Unfortunately, one of the co-chairs, Dr. Jemison, who we heard from when at recent town council meeting, has resigned not only from co-chairing, but also from the committee itself. And so that is a big loss to the committee and they are taking a very brief break from their at least once a week meetings to uh, regroup over the holidays and then uh, move forward as they continue to do all the work they described to us previously. And on a separate note, I appreciate that via the consent calendar tonight, we sent to TSO, which I happen to be a member of, the memo that is in your packet that stated November seventeenth from the Board of Licensed Commissioners about delegating some authority over the public way to the Board of Licensed Commissioners for lunch carts. And I ask simply that either decide you care about it and check it out with TSO, or just, you know, rather than asking questions once it comes back to the town council. Because it's a little bit of arcane knowledge in terms of lunch cart regulations, which obviously are not a big thing in November and December of the year and may well end up on a carryover list. But is something, since we are keepers of the public way, but they help figure out what's the best spot for lunch carts, also known as food trucks, it seems appropriate that just as we've delegated a lot of authority to the town manager, we could delegate some limited authority to them as well.
Thank you. Any other uh, liaison reports? Uh, town manager report, Paul, highlights?
Just to note that the town clerk will be conducting a recount of two precincts tomorrow at ten AM at the Banks Community Center.
Okay, are there questions of the town count, town manager? Alyssa, you have your hand up. Okay. Then uh, I'm going to, I'm sorry, Dorothy, yes?
Okay. I just want to um, say a note of appreciation to the town manager, thinking about the town manager that walked out of the um, town council meeting in another town recently. Um, and I, I hope that we don't offend you in such a way and that you don't do that. That's it.
Thank you, Dorothy. I think that's very, very appropriate. Are there any other comments? Especially on the night when we begin discussing his performance evaluation. Regarding the president's report, I just want to go back and remind you to get me comments. I'll be sending you an email reminder and giving you a date by which I want comments with regard to the town managers, the memo regarding the performance report. Kathy? You have to unmute.
I thought you were gonna say the next thing was uh, future agenda items, Linda. So my hand was up for that, not for this.
Okay. Alyssa? All right, then we'll go on to future agenda items. Alyssa?
After Kathy. So I just, Lynn, I, I looked at the draft you did and A, you know, you, I know you realize you're doing this to us, but it's like six meetings in a row or somewhere in that. And I think these meetings still look too packed. Uh, and I understand why they're, why they're packed. We're trying to rush and get everything done before the next council sits, but we should have, I, in my very strong opinion, we should avoid doing that. When we get tired, we don't have good discussions. Um, I thought we had healthy discussion tonight on the reconsideration and then not reconsideration of the moratorium. But I think it's good that we allow us, ourselves time to talk about things that have long-term consequences. So I would urge you to relook at that, um, since I'm already hearing other things on the list. Um, and some other things may have to carry over. So that's, I'm not gonna pick out any specific. They just look too packed to me for a real discussion.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I would like us to ensure, and I sent you some wording about this, but I don't know what you want to call it because it is late. But at our last meeting, speaking of packing our agendas, at our last meeting on December twentieth, assuming that is indeed still our last meeting and that we won't find a way to add some more that week just to get some more work done, is that I think we, it's really important. This is not a woo-woo, wouldn't it be lovely thing. It is really important for us to take some time as a first town council to share our feelings about our individual service or how our work together has worked. This is going to be something that I'm saying supplements those wonderful memos that all the committees are writing to the future town council. I think it's really important to recognize the service that we have all done and not just say, hey, it's been great knowing y'all, bye. I don't think that's enough and certainly not for an adult girl town council. And I think people should be allowed, and obviously Lynn, you're running the meeting, you should decide how. And there are a lot of different ways to do it, but one of the traditions, and I know it sounds boring, but one of the traditions we started in the past is when people, just before an election, we would do this because back in the olden days, you'll remember that you would get, you would have an election and the next day you'd start serving. Now we have this new reality in Amherst, right, where we have this long period where the, the old group continues on, and I think it's really important to acknowledge the service of the people who won't be continuing and give them a chance to say nice things to people who will be continuing.
Well, Alyssa, thank you for saying that. And while it's not listed here, it has been in here. And uh, the, one of the reasons why I'm trying to push everything before the twentieth is so we have time for exactly what you just mentioned. And that's an opportunity for all of us to have an opportunity for comment. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call a meeting adjourned at ten thirty-six.